This is session number ten that we're doing for M T H two forty, of course. Uh, today, we're gonna be talking about uh six point two and nope, six point three. And six point four, which are, you know, some might say one of the hardest two chapters that we have to deal with in this course. Um, so this will probably, I've set the session to go from six to nine thirty. Uh, probably won't go all the way to nine thirty, but it will probably be a late one, so uh just buckle in for that. Um, of course, I have my notes here, so I have six point three and six point four notes. Uh, and they're actually quite long, so six point three is like this whole section. And then uh there's some examples of using the polynomials that we're gonna be using, the remainder. And then six point four is not actually that much in six point four, uh it's just kind of weird questions to deal with, right? So this document is available, there's actually a new version of it, which I have to give here. Um, there's a new version of it in homework help now. Not now yet, but now. No, the the whole thing there at the at the uh, I posted just now, this second, ignore the one from before. I'll just delete the one from before. There you go. So that has everything up to uh, it has everything up to four point three, but not the whole thing of four point three, but anyways, yeah, that's. Um, I am recording, can. Yeah. Um, can someone say something quickly, just so I can see it's in the recording?
Uh.
Uh, yes, good, okay, thank you. Did I spell the stuff, everything in the uh remainders topics Taylor and McLaurin series, yeah, cuz that would be, that would be bad if I made a typo there. One time I did, and I'm always nervous.
It's not life threatening.
Always nervous. Okay, so of course, I'm going to be making reference to my notes as I'm going, so if you wanna follow along, you could follow along there. So, yeah, let's take a look at six point three, so what's what's in six point three, well, six point three is uh, well, it's the Taylor. And McLaurin series. McLaurin series. Right, uh, it's also uh Taylor's theorem, Ta- Taylor's theorem. Which is called Taylor's theorem with remainder, Taylor's theorem with remainder. Um, and those are both very important things, those are both big things that we have to take a second and really try to deal with. Um, there's a lot to this, uh, there's part of these things, there's also Taylor, Taylor. Slash McLaurin, I'll just call it Mac uh polynomials. Right, and um, okay, I think that's everything from six point three, yeah. Yeah, that's everything from six point three. Uh, then six point four is working with the stuff, so we do uh binomial series. Binomial series. Um, then we do um, just using a bunch of functions and their Taylor series, so just using the Taylor series. Using Taylor series to do stuff. Um, and then there's also differential equations and integrals. Which I, we will not spend much time on because there were no practice questions for it in the textbook, which means I think they're not gonna be on the test, so. Different. Chill. Equations.
Um, did you go over differential equations in class?
Yes.
Oh, what, cuz I, we didn't do that for our.
Okay, well.
Okay, I guess that means it's probably not.
Probably not on the test then, yeah, Horowitz did it, did some, did it maybe two, two or three questions with differential equations and. Maybe just two, and then he did two, maybe two integral questions, so this is definitely the least important section. The most important section that I think that's gonna, quite possibly gonna be something similar to what's on the test is with remainder. I mean, of course, this combined these two, um, and probably some binomial series. So these are the three main important parts, I guess technically. That's the combination that I mean, but it's kind of those two go hand in hand. Um, so, yeah.
It's just me, are you like your, your faces like falling behind with your sound?
Oh, it's not in sync?
No, it's not.
Badly?
Maybe your memories fall again, enough to be very noticeable.
Is it, yeah, I'm not sure, I don't know what it is, no, my computer's doing fine, it's probably Discord. Uh, how's it for everybody else, does everybody, am I out of sync?
It shouldn't make a huge difference anyway, cuz we can hear you and everything, and we can see the screen.
Yeah.
It's not lagging.
No.
Yeah, the base case problem, like it's it's a nice touch, but like it's not necessary.
No, I know, yeah, it's okay, it's uh, I know. Uh, so hopefully, can you see like I'm writing hello right now, can you see hello?
Or it's delayed.
It was like a little bit behind, but it's alright.
But. For a second.
You'll probably still be able to, I think it'll be okay still, if it gets really bad, then, well, I'd actually, I don't know what I would do to try to fix it, I mean, I'm, my connection's fine.
If uh, if that doesn't work, we should move to like a different problem, like zoom or, or like worst case scenario.
Yeah, yeah, worst case scenario, we do that, but.
Okay, I have a question.
Yeah.
So like, if you ever, if you have a polynomial function, what's the point of taking a Taylor series of it? Because isn't the whole point of a Taylor series to get like a function such as, you know, cosine of x and approximate it with with a polynomial?
Uh huh.
Would you approximate a polynomial with a polynomial?
Yeah, so you wouldn't do that, you wouldn't, you can, and it'll work, but it wouldn't be useful.
Does like, I had much of questions in the textbook, do you think they were more of like, just teaching you the concept rather than?
Yeah, just to try to, cuz they're really simple examples, because they're they're not really helpful, because there's like. There's not really a use for it, since it's already a polynomial, but yeah, you still have to apply the rules if you're gonna do that. And they are technically centered at different locations, so it still means, still means something. When you do, right?
Alright, just, it's not necessarily, it doesn't have much, okay, thank you.
The the main part there is like centering, you center this, the the function at some other place, and then that makes a difference.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay. Um, sorry, my nose is itchy for some reason, okay, let's start then. Well, where we left off essentially is that there are some functions that can be written as power series, for example. A over one minus r can be written as the power series. It's the sum, n goes, the n goes from, or one minus x, I guess you'll call it, n goes from zero to infinity of a x to the n. Right, that's a power series, that's a function, f of x, that can be written as a power series. Okay, can every function be written as a power series, that's the question we're trying to answer now. Um, the answer is, um, well, actually, I don't, I don't want every function, but a lot of functions can. Um, and so the way we do that is called the Taylor series of the function, so the Taylor series. Of f, right, is the power series that represents f of x. So in the case of this one up here, um, this is the Taylor series, uh, it's it's not written as a Taylor series, I mean. The point is that if a function can be written as an infinite series, it is the Taylor series. Um, and so we're gonna get to that, let's look at the uniqueness of the of the Taylor series. Um, but, so yeah, this is, really is a Taylor series, Taylor series already, but we're gonna try to figure out how to do that for like any function, okay? So let's take a second and try to like reason how it works, well, let's like assume that this is true, right, assume that f of x. Should open my notes while I'm doing this. Um, assume that. Uh, f of x, yeah, f of x can be written as this infinite sum, right? The sum n goes from zero to infinity of C n x minus a to the n, right? F of x is some function, we're just saying that it can be written as this. What matters here, well, x doesn't particularly matter cuz it's f of x, a is just what we center it at. And n is the index variable. So what we really need to figure out, what what the actual thing is to figure out is the C n's, right, what is the sequence? Right, that we have to put in front to make it equal to f of x. Right? And technically, we don't particularly know that it is equal yet by just finding that, uh, you have to prove that it's equal. Uh, but you can kind of think of this as, it's like, when I say f of x equals a series, it's it's the power series that relates to f of x. Whether it perfectly matches f of x, um, or not is something you have to calculate later, and we'll do that with the remainders and and stuff like that. So that's a whole other thing, but right now, we're finding the Taylor series of f, okay, so yeah, that's that, Taylor series of f. Which doesn't necessarily mean it's equal to f, is what I'm saying. So how do we find the Taylor series of f? Well, one thing we know for sure, right, is that if I plug in f of a, I should get f of a. I mean, that makes sense, right, I should get, I should get f of a on this side. So let's see what happens, I mean, if I plug in. F of a here, how about I expand this a little bit, I'm gonna expand this first, f of x equals, um. Uh, let me expand it here, so it's gonna be C zero times one plus, oh, well, hold on. Yeah, I'm not gonna expand it yet, actually, sorry, I'm, I am gonna plug in f of a. So if I plug in f of a on the left side, whatever I get on the right side, it should be f of a. So what it would be is that we would get, well, C zero times one, cuz if this exponent is, if this exponent is zero. Then it doesn't matter what's in the bracket, it's just gonna be one in this particular case. And then it's gonna be plus C one times zero, because x minus a, I'm plugging in a, it's gonna be a minus a, so it's gonna be zero there. Plus C two times zero, plus C three times zero, da 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 da. Right, so this is power one, power two, power three, but it doesn't matter, it's just zero. Well, what we figure out is that f of a equals C zero. And we kind of in a backwards way figured out what the first term was, we know C zero, right, the whole point is that we have to figure this out, we have to figure out what C n is. What is? Is C n, right, so the whole point is figure that out, well, we figured out the first one. The first um value of this power series, uh, of the sequence that defines the power series is f of a. Again, for some random function f, let's say we were evaluating f equals, I don't know, uh, f of x equals ln x plus one. Well, then you just put in a, whatever you're centering it at, right, you couldn't center it at zero, you, and I guess you could center it, no, I don't know, you could, you could usually center it at one. Um, or, no, you could center it at zero here, actually. And so, um, what we have is that, okay, you plug that in, a, you get a value, and that's what your C zero is. So we know, we already know our first sum, we know that this is gonna be f of a times nothing, x, it would be, it would be. X minus a to the zero, so what I'm doing is I'm writing the first term here, this is my, this is my n equals zero term, I'm bringing it a little closer. Bring it a little closer, just so we don't run out of space. So, f of a. Um, and this is my. N equals zero, right, cuz when n equals zero, it's gonna be C zero, x minus a to the zero, x minus a to the zero is one, so it's just C zero. And C zero, we just said over here was f of a. So we know our first term, we know the first term in the power series is just f of a, that's gonna be, that's definitely gonna be the first term. What's the second term? Right, well, um, one other thing we know is that if I take f prime of a. Right, and I take the derivative of the power series, I should also get f prime of a, and then we have an equation that tells us what f prime of a is gonna be. Right, so on this side, I take the derivative, which is gonna be the sum, n goes from zero to infinity, well, C n's a constant. And it's gonna be n times, see, I got the n times x minus a to the n minus one. Right, and here, well, if I plug in, sorry, that's that's x, if I plug in a to this function, f prime of a, whatever I get on the left side. Right, is is gonna be equal, I mean, that's the point of the equality, right? So let's take a look at what we get, let me expand a few terms here, when n equals zero, it's gonna be C zero times zero. Um, and you know what, I'll make this an a, just so that we don't have to, I don't have to write it again, there we go. So C zero times, times zero, times a minus a is zero to the power negative one, that's just zero. Okay, next term is C one times one, times zero to the power zero. Even though we don't usually call that one, in the case here with power series, uh, for some reason, we're allowed to say that, and that's what we've been saying this whole chapter, so that's nothing new. Uh, zero to the power zero is one for our ca- our our purposes here. Um, and look at that, that term has a one in it, okay, let's keep going now then. Well, the next term is gonna be C two times two times zero to the power negative one. Right, or not negative one, sorry, uh, it's two, so one, zero to the power one. And then plus C three times three times zero to the power two. So all the terms after this are gonna have a zero in them, right, all, this term has zero, this term has zero, this term has zero, everything after, dot, 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 has a zero. So all we're left with is that f prime of a is C one, and we figured out what um, C one is, right, so let me, let me keep a list here. Um, let me keep a list here of what our terms are. So this is. This is uh for uh, for C one, no, sorry, C zero, I got f of a. For C, C one, I got f prime of a, right, and then we're gonna keep going, we're gonna go to C two, C three. Okay, um, so something you might think now, right, is that, you know, C n. Is gonna be maybe the nth derivative evaluated at a. Right, you might think that, and that would be a reasonable thing based on this pattern that we've seen so far, but it's, let's take a look at a few more terms. But hopefully, that's making sense to you, that, you know, maybe this could be the formula, at C n is the nth derivative, cuz the first term was the first derivative. The zeroth term was the zeroth derivative, or just not taking a derivative, so maybe the nth term is the nth derivative evaluated at a, just keep that in your brain. Um, so let's see, let's see if that's true with the next one, right, so again, if I have, you know, if I take this series. And I take the second derivative now, right, I take the second derivative at a. And I take the second derivative of the infinite series, which would be the sum, n goes from zero to infinity. Of, so it's gonna be C n times n times n minus one, times, well, a minus a to the n minus two. Right? So here, here we have, um, uh, you know, this is the second derivative. Of the power series that we're trying to find, right, I set up here that f of x is equal to this power series, so the second derivative of it. Should equal the second derivative of the function that we're trying to figure out, yeah, yeah.
Wait, is it supposed to be a minus a or x minus a?
It's supposed to be a minus a, because see, I'm evaluating it a right away here. Right?
Ah.
You could do x, you could do x, but then I would just say, okay, well, now think about what's f double prime of a, that's what we have to figure out. Right? F double prime of a.
When you're done with that, can you just like explain the, I didn't understand how how every term after the the second one was zero, like kind of, is it because, actually, why, why is it?
Well, because look here, what what do we have, so for the, for, just just plug in the numbers, so n equals zero, for the n equals zero term, it's gonna be C zero. Times zero.
Yeah.
Times a minus a to the negative one, well, a minus a is zero. So it's gonna be zero to the negative one, so I can put a negative one there, doesn't really matter, it's zero. The next term we have is when n equals one, so it's gonna be C one times one. Times a minus a to the power of one minus one. Right, a minus a to the power of one minus one, so that's zero to the zero, right, zero to zero, which we call one for our purposes here. Right, which we say.
It's hard to prove, but yeah, okay.
It's not one, but I think for some reason, we're allowed to do that here, I don't know, from the beginning of the chapter six, the textbook has been using that, and it even said. We assume that this is true, zero to the zero is one, it says that in the textbook, so, yeah. Uh, so that, see, so we got a one here, then the next term for n equals, for n equals two, what's it gonna look like? What's gonna be C two times two times a minus a to the one. Or I can write to the two minus one. Does that make sense, how I got this?
Yeah, so it's briskly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
And then a minus a is zero. So it's C two times two times zero. And then the next term, when n equals three, it'll be three, and this will be a two up here, it's still a zero there.
Yeah, yeah.
And every term after this will have a zero.
Okay, yeah.
And that means they're all, they all just cancel out, so all we have left is this C one times one times one. Which tells us that, I didn't write it, but why didn't I write it? Which tells us that f prime of a equals C one, didn't I write it somewhere, where did I write, oh, I didn't write, I see, yeah, f prime of a equals C one. And so actually, you know what, let's go up here, and our next term, so I said C one is f prime of a, and then it's gonna be x minus a to the one. So we know our next term now in our infinite series, right, this is gonna continue forever, right, but so we have C one, x minus a to the one. Okay, let's keep going, let's try to find the next one, so f double prime of a equals this. So let's write out a few couple, a couple parts here, f double prime of a is gonna be, well, C zero times zero times negative one. Times zero to the negative two, okay? C one times one times zero times zero, no, yeah, times zero to the uh negative one. Plus C two times two. Um, times one, times zero to the zero, which is one. Right, so we got a term here, and then let's take a look at what C three would be, C three times three, times two. Times zero to the one, and every term for the exact same reason after that will have a zero in it. So that has zero, that has zero, and everything else after it has a zero. All we're left with is that f double prime of a equals two C two. Or in other words, f double prime of a over two equals C two, we found our third term in the sequence. And that breaks this rule. It's not, not that breaks the rule, but the idea we had before of what C n could possibly be, that C n is, C n is just the nth derivative of f at a. Because we have it divided by two all of a sudden here, right? So that's not what C n is, okay, that's not what C n is. C two is f double prime at a over two. Okay, let's do one last one, and then you can see the formula after that, you can see, it's it's not too hard to see what the formula is after that. So, um, the third derivative. And, uh, yeah. So for the third derivative. Is, well, okay, before I, before I get onto that, another, something else we could say is that C n is definitely gonna contain an, at, the nth derivative of a. But it's gonna be multiplied by something, right, it's gonna be multiplied by something here. Right, because we have a half, we have a one, a one, so it's gonna be multiplied by something, now we have to figure out what that something is. And so essentially, you know, just to, in case someone's confused, like what's the point of all this? We're trying to get an explicit formula for C n. If we can find that, then we can have a way to describe this function as a power series. Right, cuz I'm saying that f of x equals this power series defined by C n, it would be nice if we had an explicit formula for that. So, uh, let's keep going with the third derivative, so f triple prime at, I'll do it at x first, so.
I did a quiz, I barely got it right.
Someone's got their mic on.
I did on the first take.
Someone's got their mic on.
My bad, my bad.
Don't worry. Um, and. So, yeah, our next derivative is gonna be C n times n times n minus one, times n minus two. X minus a to the n minus three. Okay, that's gonna be our third derivative, if I evaluate this at a, we should get almost the same thing. C n times n times n minus one, times n minus two, times a minus a to the n minus three, and let's expand these terms here. So. Zero, we have C zero times zero times da 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 da, da 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 da. And then a minus a is gonna be zero to the uh negative three, doesn't matter what's in these brackets here, just contains a zero. Right? C one, for our C one term, is gonna be C one times one, times zero, times whenever negative one, I guess, and then zero. To the uh one minus three is minus two. Okay? C two is gonna be two times, uh, two minus one is one, zero. Zero to the power negative one, okay, that's that term, notice so far, everything contains a zero, so they're all canceling out. C three times three, times two, times one, times zero to the power zero. Which we're calling one for our purposes, look, we have our first term that doesn't have a zero. Let's check what C four would be, so C four is gonna be C four times four, times three, times two, times zero to the power one. Dot, dot, dot. This contains a zero, everything after will contain a zero. This is all equal to f triple prime at a, so we know that f triple prime at a is equal to C three. Uh, I guess you say two times three times C three, or in other words. Two times three, not two point three, two times three. We found our third entry in the sequence, C three, and. You can also write two times three as two times three times one. Right, or one times two times three, or just thinking out the numbers, which is the same thing as three factorial. So maybe the nth degree formula. Is the nth derivative evaluated at a over n factorial. Let's see if that matches what we've been having so far, C zero, right, so our formula here, I'm gonna bring this chart down, cuz it's getting too messy. See if that, let's see if this matches what, you know, what's the data that we've gotten so far. Not really data, but the experiment we've been doing so far. So, right, I'm I'm suggesting that maybe this is our C n formula, so does it match, C zero, right, is gonna be f zero. At a over zero factorial, well, the zeroth derivative of a is just f, and zero factorial is one. So yes, it does match C zero, does it match C one? The first derivative, which is just f prime, at a over one factorial. One factorial is one, so yes, that does match. C two. Second derivative at a over two factorial, two factorial is two, and it also matches. And of course, it matches the third one, right, which is gonna be the third derivative at a over three factorial. So, yes, in fact, I mean, this doesn't prove it, but this maybe gives you a, you know, you can see why. This is true, and maybe, hopefully, you can see that this would continue indefinitely if I could keep differentiating, right? I would always end up with this, n, n minus one, n minus two, which is like the three, two, one. Right, which is like the factorial that I'm having, and the next one would be n minus three, and it would be four, three, two, one, when I differentiate again. And I differentiate again, differentiate again, I would have on my n equals five term, I would have five, four, three, two, one. And I'd always have that factorial on the bottom there. And so, yes, in general, okay, in general, f of x, the Taylor series of f of x. If it can be written as a Taylor series, which it can, um, it would be C n x minus a to the n, which is what we started with. What we just discovered is that this is actually, or a way to write C n explicitly, is this gonna be the. Nth derivative of a over n factorial times x minus a to the n. And this is the Taylor series. Definition.
So that was actually the general form like of Taylor series of function f x?
Yeah, exactly, I didn't, I didn't specify any particular function here, I didn't specify any particular function, I just said in general, f of x, what what needs to be true? The whole time, well, you know, f evaluated at a needs to also be, it needs to be equal to the power series evaluated at a. Right, and f prime of a needs to be equal to the derivative of the power series evaluated at a. And I just used these facts to build up this pattern that we were getting here, and from that, I could deduce what the formula would be, and this is what the formula is.
One last thing, we're, another, this is like, I guess, a buildup from six point one, six point two, but why is, is the x minus a to the n term, like, n, like included in it?
Is n, what, so what was the question, sorry?
X minus eight to the n, like, what make, like, why is it a part of the C n in the for Taylor series in?
Well, well, C, it's not part of C n, C n is, so like, here, if I have, in general, what this, what this means is if I just set a equals zero. If I just set a equals zero here, and I'm saying that f of x is equal to some series, n equals zero, da da, C n x to the n. If I just set a equal to zero, it's just gonna be x to the n, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
What I'm saying is that, when I, when I say this, is I'm saying that there's some infinite polynomial, C zero plus C one. X plus C two x squared plus C, up, C, uh, C three x cubed, da da da. That describes this function, right, so maybe that's one plus two x plus four x squared plus sixteen x cubed, da da da. What matters are the coefficients here, right, the coefficients here are what matters. That's our C n, that's the sequence of coefficients, that's our C n here, C n, I'll write it in blue. That's what our C n is, it's it's the sequence of coefficients that describe, that exactly control whatever is the power series is outputting. Right, that's, the C n is what makes it match a specific f of x. Right, so here.
Okay, yeah.
Here, we were looking for the formula for C n, that's what makes it match a specific f of x, the x minus a to the n is just what ma- The X minus A to the N is just what makes it a power series. Right? It was, it's what makes it a function of X. And the minus A is just where it's centered at, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, 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 I'm assuming so.
Okay, good. Okay, so that's the definition of, of the Taylor series here. Oh, and a Maclaurin series is if A equals zero. That's it? This whole difference?
Wait, the Maclaurin is just A equals zero always?
That's anytime you see Maclaurin series, it means A equals zero. That's exactly what that means, and that's the only difference.
This is gonna be like C N, X to the N, like.
Exactly, exactly. It would be C N, X to the N. This, this, um, here, how about this? I'll write it like this. That's the Taylor series up there. And this is the Maclaurin series. Down here, which would be, uh, the sum, N goes from zero to infinity of the nth derivative at A over N factorial, X to the N. That's the Maclaurin series. So how does everybody feel about that? How's everybody feeling here about this stuff?
I think it's alright, but let's see some questions and I know, like, if I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes, it makes sense. It's just like, it's more just of, it's. Like, it's useful to think about more, just like the other one, like A over one minus. Uh, R squared, this is just kind of thing like that. Like, all this does is it, it just changes between a fraction or like a formula. Like a function be, between that and series. I don't, again, no, it looks to be complicated, but I don't like overthink it. It's the same idea.
Yeah.
So it's different.
This, this is.
Same idea from what?
Like the one, you know, the A over one minus R squared, it's one of those.
Oh, you mean for geometric.
A over one minus, oh, yeah, X here like this.
It's a bit different.
Yeah, it's, it's the same idea. It's that, it's just for some general function, instead of the specific, we know how to do it for the specific function. But for a general function, this is how you do it with the Taylor series. Alright, that's how you do it.
Also, Taylor series only exists for a function that has like infinitely many derivatives.
Uh, yeah. Well, I mean, like, we can try, and we'll see what happens. That's probably even a good exercise to do, like. Let's start with a polynomial. Like, if I were to give you five X squared, plus three X, plus, oops, not, plus two, like, I just randomly, I was coming up with that. Right? Uh, and I'm saying, like, like, find, find the Taylor polynomial. Sorry, not Taylor polynomial, but Taylor series. Uh, sent, uh, well, find the Maclaurin series, whatever, Maclaurin series. So that means centered at zero. Right? So what we're gonna do. Is since F of X is equal to that, it's gonna be equal to this infinite series, N equals zero to infinity. Of the nth derivative at A over N factorial, times X to the N. And let's just figure out what these derivatives are, right? So the first derivative. So first of all, I need, I need F at A. So F at zero, right? So. F at zero, so F at A equals F at zero, which equals two. F prime of A equals F prime of zero. Well, first I'll find F prime of X. Is, uh, ten X plus three, so evaluated at X equals zero, is going to give me three. Right? F double prime of X is gonna be ten, evaluated at X equals zero is gonna give me ten. And the next derivative, F triple prime. Of X is gonna be zero, evaluated at X equals zero is gonna be zero. And no matter what, every derivative after that is gonna be zero. Right? So what we get out of this, look at what we get out of this. Well, I'm gonna write this out explicitly. The zeroth derivative over zero factorial, so two over zero factorial. Plus the first derivative, three over one factorial. Times X to the one, plus the, um. Um, yeah, yeah, plus the third derivative, which was ten, over two factorial, X squared. And look what we get. Two plus three X plus five X squared. Which is, of course, by no coincidence. Exactly what we started with. Every other, so this doesn't go on forever, but every other derivative is zero. So it's gonna be plus zero over three factorial, X cubed. Plus zero over four factorial, X to the four. Right? So there's no infinite series, but the Taylor series of a polynomial is just the polynomial. With infinitely many zero terms after it, but everything has infinitely many zero terms after it if you want, so.
I'm just curious why you put like an integral sign, like the top, like right where you started the. Uh, example, just at the top, like the example, uh, when you first stated the polynomial. Like the integral sign?
Oh, this? That's a five.
It's a five.
That's a five.
Oh, okay, my bad, my bad.
No, no, that's, that's my bad. That's my bad. That's my fives that are bad, yeah. Um.
There's his K now, his files, oh my gosh.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever, T C K's. Um, but yeah, so that's the idea here. So the, when I, if I do it to a polynomial, I'm just gonna get the polynomial. So that's not really interesting. It's not helpful. There's nothing, nothing to do there, right? Okay, but what if we do it with, not a polynomial, what if we do it with something that's, you know? Uh. Well, not a polynomial, there's nothing, nothing else to say there. Uh, let me find, I wrote down some good practice questions from the textbook. I think we're gonna start with that. That are good relating to six point three, and then we'll work from there. There are, the Horowitz questions are good, but. They're, they're a little weird, I'm gonna be honest.
The test question might be weird too, so you know, we don't mind.
That's true. We're gonna go, we're gonna go through it.
That's pretty redundant, uh, just saying.
Yeah.
It's like. As in Zaga.
I wonder if Horowitz talked about his, like, I wonder if he knows his, um, and his reputation.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
He's a professor. I guarantee you, he'd figure out his own reputation.
It's not a bad reputation.
Google themselves.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad reputation. It's, it's more comical, honestly.
I think his reputation is fine. I think he has like a three, a three star, four star rating, which is like. Middle of the road.
He's the anti-hero.
Yeah.
I think that's what it is. He's the anti-hero.
Everyone hates him, cause everyone hates math. But like, no one can actually like pit anything really like bad.
He can't really be mad at him for something, right? It's like, we're, he's just taking our, he's just the receiver, right? It's not really anything special.
You just love to hate him.
Yeah. What a brave man.
Okay, let's start this question here. So this is one fifty nine from the textbook. Um, so it's find the Taylor series for F centered at X equals one. Okay, so we're gonna try to find the Taylor series for E to the two X. This is a really nice function to find the Taylor series for. Um, and you'll see why in a second. So the main difficulty in finding a Taylor series for something is that. If you really wanna find the Taylor series, the infinite series, you have to find a, a formula for the nth derivative of the function. Right? Because that's part of the formula. So if you, you know, you can just write, you can just write F, the nth derivative of F evaluated at X. Or evaluated at A really is what you need. But that's, you know, if you wanna go one step further and actually find a formula for that, that would be pretty useful, and you can actually write it, you know, succinctly, like, you know, in, in a small amount of space. Or like less amount of like having to do extra calculation, uh, it would be just a nice Taylor series. So E to the X is a nice function, or, and E to the two X is also a nice function, to be able to do that for, right? So if we look at F of X. F of X is E to the two X, okay. F prime of X is. Two E to the two X. F double prime of X is. Two squared E to the two X. F triple prime of X. Is two cubed E to the two X. In general, the nth derivative of X is two to the N E to the two X. Okay, so, uh, we're only one step away from writing the function as a, as a Taylor series, just using the definition. That F of X is equal to this series, right? Um, it's gonna be the sum, and goes from zero to infinity of, okay, well, the nth derivative, two to the N, E to the two X. Oh, sorry, evaluated A. Uh, and A is one. Sorry, I should be clear here. This, let me, let me write it out fully. I'll actually even copy and paste the, uh, the actual. Definition here. Okay, oops, that's a bad quality. That's the definition that we're working on. So. The nth derivative evaluated at A is what we actually care about. The nth derivative evaluated at A, cause that's what this top part, I probably can't see. Top part of the function is here, nth derivative evaluated at A. Well, it's just two to the N, E to the two A. And what's A? Centered at X equals one, so one E squared. So now I can write this. F of X is equal to the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of two to the, two to the N E squared over N factorial. X minus one to the N. And there we go. That is the Taylor series for E to the two X. Evaluated, I mean, to either X centered at one. I'm gonna check the answer quickly, just so we don't, you know, while I make a mistake.
Should we take the E since it's a constant out, or doesn't really matter?
Doesn't really matter, but you can if you want to. Yep, that's right. Okay. That's right. So that's the answer. That's the Taylor series for F of X centered at X equals one. Again, the main difficulty in answering this question is to find an, a formula for the nth derivative, and then evaluate that at A. Right? For a lot of functions, that's very difficult to do.
Also, sometimes what you can do, and I suggest this third one, is you should try to like expand it back and see if it kinda makes sense. Like, expand this, um, this back and see if it makes sense, and if like the numbers kind of seem to match up, then it's also good to come check.
How expand it back? What do you mean by expand it back?
Like do two to the power of N, so two to the power of zero, that gives you one, and then divide it and see if it like, how it makes sense.
Yeah, it's just that you wouldn't know, you don't know what the polynomial looks like yet, right? You don't know what the finite, like the. Like, if I gave you a random polynomial, would you know that it's E to the two X?
I guess not.
Right? You wouldn't know, so it'd be, it'd be hard to know.
I would say a better way to check would be actually just write out like four terms of your series. And see if it approaches the correct value.
Yeah, and plug in some value of X and, and compare.
Clearly, I mean, it won't be exact, but if it doesn't get really close, then just clearly something like, it's not.
Something more is wrong. Yeah, exactly.
He said, he said it won't be exact. Are you talking about like?
It's only exactly if you do it infinitely. Because it's.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But I'm saying if you wanna see if it's, if this, if whatever series, you figured out, if it's correct, it needs to approach. The value of the function it represents, that we represent E to the two X with an infinite series. After like five terms, you should be getting pretty close to E to the two X. It won't be.
E to the twixt that value.
At that value, yeah. Which, which, which brings me pretty nicely to the next topic, which is the Taylor polynomials, right? Taylor polynomials. So essentially, all it is, is I write it like this, T N is, and in my notes it's TK, but I'm not gonna write K's, cause I can't write K's. Um, T N of X, so the Taylor, the nth degree Taylor polynomial, uh, of X is the, the Taylor series. Which is the sum, N goes from zero to infinity of, um, so it was, uh, F, the nth derivative. Evaluated at A over N factorial, over, I mean, over N factorial, N factorial times X minus A to the N. But you go, I guess I do have to use a K, you go until K. You don't go to infinity, you just stop at some point. So for example, let's, let's find the, uh, let's find, well, maybe let's do the, in particular, let's do the one here. Um, I'll do one from Horowitz's lecture now. Uh, cause those are good, of course. So, uh, F of X, so example. F of X equals ln X, okay? Find, so A equals one, right? So as we're centered, find. T one, two, three. Um. T one, two, three. Of X. Does that make sense? Like, maybe I wrote it better. T one of X.
And find each of them individually?
Uh, T zero, yes, individually. T one of X. T two of X. T three of X, yeah. Find these four things. So, okay, well, what's the zeroth degree? What we do is we take the infinite series, but just stop at, you know, we only do one term. So T zero. Of X is going to be the sum, N goes from zero to infinity. Of, um, uh, so F. Sorry, not zero to zero, of F N of A over N factorial, times X minus one, time to the power of N. A is one, right? And this should be one there. Okay, well, what's, what's the function evaluated at one? So, right, so we're just, we just need to find, for this particular case, it's just going to be. Uh, F at one. Over one, times X minus one to the one. So it's just F, F of one. F of one, times X minus one. What's F of one? I just go to the actual function, right? So ln one is zero, right? So that means that the first thing should be zero. Yep. So this is just gonna be ln one, times X minus one. So this is zero X minus one, which is zero. So the zeroth degree Taylor polynomial for ln X centered at one is zero. Okay.
Wait, question.
Yeah.
See if I, like, it's correct, but like, I wanna see if I'm missing something. Won't there be no X minus one, cause that you do X minus one to the power of zero?
Uh, yeah, I guess you're right. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Uh, I got a little confused because A is one, so I was, yeah, you're right. So the power of zero.
So I didn't know if I was, um, and that's like, I, uh, thinking the wrong ways, I want to make sure if I'm.
No, no, you're doing good. You're doing good, yeah.
That's where I said that, yeah, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So our first degree polynomial is gonna be evaluated at one. So we already know what evaluated zero gives us. It gives us zero. Plus, okay, F prime of one. Over one factorial, times X minus one. Well, what's F prime of one? Well, I have to go to the actual function. I have to go to actual F of X is ln X. Find what F prime of, of X is, which is one over X, and then find what F prime of one is, which is one. So we know that our next term is just gonna be zero plus X minus one. Right? And, uh, let's keep going a little bit here. So the second Taylor polynomial. Is gonna be the sum, N goes from zero to two. Of the nth derivative at one over N factorial, X minus one to the N, which is gonna give us. Zero plus X minus one. We already know what those first two terms are. Notice it, they, they carry on from the last one, really just adding another term now. Right? So evaluated at two, this is gonna be the second derivative, derivative evaluated at one. So let's do that quickly. F double prime of X is negative one over X squared. Uh, evaluated at one, so F double prime of one is going to be negative one. So we know that the next term is gonna be minus one over two, cause it's two factorial. X minus one squared. And this is the, whoop, this is, yeah, this is the second degree. Uh, hopefully I didn't say the wrong degree before. This is the second degree Taylor polynomial, because we have a highest power of X is two. Right?
Wait. Sorry, um, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, yep.
I like for, to actually test if it was true now, like if they were twice were equal with tech, test that like X equal A or. X equals some value on both sides, like FX and the Taylor series of it.
Like, like you're trying, you're, you're asking, you're asking like, is the Taylor series actually approaching the function? Is it actually equal to the function?
Yeah, so you do like, let's say FX at two, and then you'd also do it on the right side.
We'll get into that. We'll get into that. The, it's, it's not gonna be, we'll, we'll try that. I, I'm gonna get into that right after this. Let me just finish finding these, uh, Taylor polynomials. And then we're gonna get, we're gonna get into that. So this is the second degree. Now the third degree. Uh, of X is gonna be the sum, and goes from zero to three of the nth derivative evaluated at one, over N factorial. X minus one to the N. So zero plus X minus one, minus one half, X minus one squared, and now what's our last one? Well, I need to find what F triple prime of one is really. Well, I gotta, I gotta find X first, so. Um, it's just gonna be two over X cubed. Right? Yep, two over X cubed. Uh, X is equal to that. So F triple prime, I'll do it in green, so you can see that it's a different part. F triple prime of one is gonna be two. So we know that the last term here is gonna be plus two, uh, over three factorial, don't forget that. X minus one cubed. So that's two over six, which is one third. And, yep. What happened? Something happened? No, nothing happened. But why did I get a different number? T two, negative one. Oh, no, 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 I, I know what's happening. Nevermind. Nothing, nothing's wrong. Uh, this is right. So, yeah, this is, this is it. That's the third degree Taylor polynomial. Let's take a second and graph all the. Let's take a second and graph all these things, right? Because they're all graphable now, we couldn't graph them before because they were infinite series, but we can graph these. So let's start with, um, F of X. I'll just say, start with ln X, okay? That's what we're sent, that's what we're approximating, or we're, we're trying to, we're finding the Taylor series representation for, and I'll just find each. One of the, uh, plot each one of the Taylor's, uh, Taylor polynomial. So the first one was zero. Say, Y equals zero, right? So the only thing that matches between this, only thing that matches between this and the original function is that at. At the function variable at one, right, and where we're centered at, they're equal, right, they're equal there. That's the only, that's the only thing that's the same between the zeroth degree Taylor polynomial and the actual function. Let's take a look at the first degree Taylor polynomial now, so the first degree Taylor polynomial is just X minus one. There's two things in common now. The value of the function of the first degree Taylor polynomial is the same as the actual original function. And the slope of the tangent is the same at the point, at the same point, only at that point though, not at every point, only at that point. But there's two things in common now between the first degree Taylor polynomial and the original function. Whereas with the zeroth degree Taylor polynomial, we only had one thing in common, which was that, that the function, uh, the zeroth degree Taylor polynomial. Was equal at the center point, remember the same, we centered this at one, as the original function. So let's take a look at the next one, the third, uh, the, the second degree Taylor polynomial, polynomial. So the second degree Taylor polynomial is gonna be, well, it's gonna start with X minus one. Right? It's the same thing as before, and then minus a half times. X minus one squared. Okay. There's three things in common now. First of all, it matches the function, F of one is equal to the power series evaluated at one. Okay, or it's a finite series, because we stopped it, but the Taylor polynomial evaluated at one. The slope of the tangent is the same, right, the derivative, and the second derivative is the same, right, they're both curving down now. Right, they're both curving down. Right, so essentially, we're trying to get, extract all the information we can about the function from this point. Okay, so what, what information can we tell? We can find the value of the function, the derivative, the second derivative, the third derivative, we can find all that information from a single point. And we can use that to try to match the function as it's, as it's, as we get further from that center point, because you see, it kind of matches more and more. Let's find that, that, that's the third degree, let's find, oh no, sorry, that was the second degree that I just put, that I just plotted. The last one is gonna be the, uh, second degree, no, the third degree. And it's gonna be X minus one cubed, and look at that, it's matching a little better. You know, we have three pieces of information now that are the same, right? The value of the function is the same, the first derivative is the same. So when I'm saying the same, I mean, the same between the original function and the Nth degree Taylor polynomial, in this case, it's the third degree Taylor polynomial. So between those two things, there's, there's, uh, three things in common, or four things in common, four things in common maybe, yeah, four things in common. The value of the function is the same, the fu, F of one is equal to the third degree Taylor polynomial of one. F prime of one is equal to the derivative of the third degree Taylor polynomial at one. The dr, the, the slo, the slope of the tangents are the same. The second derivative is the same, right, so r- right now, we're kind of focused on this, on this black graph here, that's kind of what we wanna focus on, right? The second derivative is the same, they're both, you know, concave down here, right? Um, and then the third derivative is the same, which is not something we usually like visualize, look at here, but the third derivative is also the same, right? Um, just that controls the form, and if I were to keep adding polynomials here, it would match closer and closer. Okay, it would match closer and closer, but do we know for a fact that it's going to match infinitely well? Like, I mean, if, if I were to get the five hundredth term of the Taylor series for ln X, would that? Be a perfect match, or you know, perfect match for, you know, between zero and a hundred, or between zero and ten? Because you see here, we're converge, well, not really converging, but we're approximating the function pretty well between. Negative, you know, between zero, maybe zero point five and one point five, between zero point five and one point five. Between those two points, we're approximating the function pretty well, and away over here, we're not approximating the function very well with this, with this polynomial. Right? But we do have a, an interval here where the approximation is pretty well, is pretty good, right? So how does that interval increase? What, how do we like quantify this that we're talking about? Uh, and that, that's what brings us to remainders, which is what I'm gonna talk about next. But that's the idea, is that every time I add a degree to the Taylor polynomial, I'm essentially trying to wrap myself around the function. Not myself personally, but I'm trying to wrap the polynomial around the function better and better each time. Okay, I'm gonna give you another example, uh, and I'm gonna type it, actually, I'll probably type it, I'll give you one more example before we move on to remainders, cuz this is a really good. This, this, the sort of, I feel like doing this makes it somewhat clear as to why we're trying to do this, like how is it at all useful? Right, to just make up a power series related to a function? Well, it's, it's useful because we can approximate it, um, around a certain input. So let's take a look here, the, the, so this is COS X, right, let's take a look at the first, uh, well, it's actually the first. Eight Taylor polynomials, but you'll see why we don't have to type eight things in a second. So the zeroth degree Taylor polynomial is zero, Y equals zero. Right, oh, no, Y equals one, sorry. And you see what happens is that the function and the Taylor polynomial are the same here, right? And actually, the first degree Taylor polynomial is, is actually also one, and this is because, uh, the derivative. The derivative of COS is negative sine, sine of zero is zero. So the, this is actually both the first, sorry, the zeroth and the first Taylor polynomial. Um, and anybody stop me if you have any questions, I'm just talking, but if anybody has any questions, let me know. Um.
And I lost me there with the sine of zero, is zero N is equal to the same thing as the.
Okay, let's.
Can you just repeat that?
Let's, let, let me write it out, let me write it. We're finding the Taylor polynomials of COS of X, right, so the first one. The first one is gonna be, um, so T zero of X is going to be the sum. N goes from zero to zero of the Nth derivative at A over N factorial. X minus, well, we're centering at zero, sorry, I should say, I'll say A equals zero. We're centering at zero, so zero, X minus zero is just gonna be X to the N, so this, this is a Maclaurin polynomial now. Although we still use a T. Okay, and so then this is gonna be just, um, you know, F at zero, F at zero, that's all it's gonna be, right? So COS of zero is one, and so our zeroth Taylor polynomial is one. Let's take a look at what our first, so does that make sense there for our zeroth Taylor polynomial?
Yeah, yeah.
So let's take a look at the first degree Taylor polynomial, we're going from N equals zero to one. Of the Nth derivative at zero over N factorial, X to the N, so. Well, what's the, we, we want the first derivative, right, we want F prime of zero over one times X. Right, X the one. Okay, let's go back to our function, if F of X equals COS X, F prime of X equals. Negative sine X, and F prime of zero is zero. What that tells us is that we have zero, zero times X, which is zero. Right? So it should be clear, there's a, there was a, there's a one plus here, one plus there. One plus, that's from the N equals zero term, so this is from the N equals one term. Clear here, duh, duh. It's from our N equals zero term, this is from our N, N equals one term, and we get that it's actually just. One plus zero plus, which, which equals one. So the zeroth and the first degree Taylor polynomials, uh, for COS X, or Maclaurin polynomials for COS X, are both one. This is because, you know, the derivative of COS, it's because of the specifics of the function, because the derivative of COS is sine. And since we're centering at zero, sine of zero is zero. So there's a zero in one of the terms. And that's again, that's just a specific of the question. So does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, thanks for clearing that up.
Yeah, no problem. So, uh, yeah.
I was like, I wanna ask another question, but I don't wanna confuse anyone, it's, uh, just finished, uh, whatever you're doing with the cosine function.
Okay, okay, sure, let's, let's finish the cosine function. So that straight line there is both the zeroth. And the, um, first degree Taylor polynomial. What that really means is it's, it's the best, not only is it the best, um. Uh, so the reason it's also, first of all, the, the reason it's also the, you know, before I move on. The best first degree Taylor polynomial is because, remember, the first degree Taylor polynomial has to have the same slope. At that point as the function does. Well, the line Y equals one already has that, it already is the same slope, slope is zero. So we actually can't get a better linear approximation here, uh, than Y equals one for COS X at zero. So let's look at our second degree, which is also our third degree for similar reasoning as before. So our second and third degree Taylor polynomial is one minus X squared over two factorial, which is two. Can I use factorials? Does it let me? Yeah, it does let me, so I'll just use factorials. Okay, that's a better approximation. Our functions evaluate the same, same amount, our slopes are the same, and our second derivatives are the same. Right, the screen function, so it kind of matches in here, or maybe we can use this for an approximation between, maybe between negative a half and a half again, that's a good approximation like that. So that's both our second and third degree Taylor polynomials, let's look at our fourth and fifth degree Taylor polynomials. Again, anybody can stop me if you have any questions about what I'm doing, I'm happy to answer any questions. So that's X squared over two factorial minus, um, X to the four over four factorial. And look at that, well, not really much different, but it's just another approximation. Uh, it's, it's an even degree, so it's gonna be an even polynomial again, and, uh, yeah, it's gonna look approximately like this, right? So it's not terribly different than before. Hold on.
What happened to the third?
Sixth degree, what third? Oh, well, because for this, because like, just for the same reason that we don't have an X term here, right? It's because it's, there's a zero there, like there's a zero in that term, because the, you're, you're gonna run into sine of zero. And so, yeah, you're gonna end, end up with that.
Uh, let's. So every, every other term is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Four, five. Wait, this was zero, zero and one, second and third. Fourth and fifth, that doesn't make sense, hold on. What happened? Fourth and fifth?
Is it zero, then the second, then just the fourth?
Oh, that's supposed to be a plus, that's supposed to be a plus, there we go. That's supposed to be a plus there, there we go, so that's the, um. That's the next Taylor polynomial, so it's the, uh, uh, fourth and fifth degree Taylor polynomials, because they're, they're equal again, because of that fact that sine of zero is zero. We're gonna run into a couple zero terms in there. Um, and so you can see we're wrapping around the function even better, I'd say, you know, between, uh, negative one point five, maybe one point six to one point six, that's a pretty good. You know, approximation. Uh, let's look at two more, so the sixth and seventh degree, and then the eighth degree. So the sixth and seventh degree is one minus. X squared over two factorial plus. You know what, I can just copy and paste, can't I? I forgot, I can do that. There you go, so that's the same as the fourth, and then I'm gonna add a new term on there, which is gonna be negative X to the six over. Eight factorial. And why does that look the same? Wait, what? Let me see this. Yeah, that's the same. That doesn't make sense, what happened, okay, give me a second. Uh, Nate, one minus X squared over two plus X to the four over four factorial minus X to the six over. Six factorial. Six factorial, okay, there we go. So we have a new approximation, which is even better for an even larger interval, right? Like I'd say even over here at two point three, negative two point three to two point three, that's a pretty good approximation. Right, so you see, as we keep going, we're wrapping around the function more and more, right? And the last one that I'll do is the eighth degree, which is just this. Plus, whoops, plus another function, which is X to the eight. Over eight factorial. And you see, it's just a little further down, this red graph, I'll, I'll make it a different color, in fact, maybe, maybe I'll just make COS dotted, so you can see that. The, the dotted graph is our original function, and these are sort of slowly approximating it, having more, well, what's happening is that. Each iteration here, each, you know, higher order Taylor polynomial has something, has a new derivative in common. With the original function, so first it was the zeroth derivative is in common, next it's the, you know, that was with the zeroth degree Taylor polynomial. Now, the first degree Taylor polynomial has both a zeroth derivative and a first derivative in common, the value of those two things are the same between the function and all that. And if you keep ramping this up, you have maybe the first hundred derivatives, then for some functions. That means you get a pretty good approximation even far away from the, um, center point of where you're centering the power series. For some functions, not every function, uh, for COS X, you do get a better and better approximation, COS X is one of the examples where you do get that. Um, and, uh, yeah, you keep getting a better approximation, so the infinite series for COS X does actually, um. Equal the function, you can, you can say it equals the function, because, uh, for, uh, any value. Well, it equals the function over an interval, which is, I'm pretty sure. All real numbers, let me just check that, but it should be all real numbers. Oh, it's in my notes here. Um, yeah, COS X is for all real numbers, yeah, so the series, the infinite series, not a single Taylor polynomial, the infinite series. Uh, you can say it's equal, because it keeps wrapping around, you can see that here. So any questions now about all this stuff that I just talked about, everything here, Taylor polynomials, all this stuff?
Uh, one thing, um. We're, are you still gonna do the, we like actually substitute a value into the F of X and then the Taylor series, onto Maclaurin series of that. Function to some point, so like, cuz like this is to N equal eight, right?
Yeah.
So, and, and it's centered at zero.
That's right.
Right? So what about, like, what is, like, I think I remember seeing something like, um, you approximate, you get a value for FX. You approximate it to the value of T, Taylor series at that same value.
Yeah.
Like, or do anything.
Yeah, yeah, we will, we will for sure, we will for sure, and I, you know what, I'll, I'll move on to that now, I mean, that's, that's sort of the next thing, yeah, that's the next thing in my notes here too. Right? Um, and that's gonna be, how do I quantify, like, like this, this red graph here, this red graph here, how do I quantify? That how closely it wraps around the original function, and how far are we from an answer, you know, given, given I'm plugging in negative three. Right? How far am I actually from the value of the function?
Okay.
And that's what we're gonna get into, yeah, go for it.
Um, you were just saying that, uh, sorry, I forgot one sec, with the first. First derivative, it should, no, with the first function, it should be at the center point, it should be the same. Then for the second, for the first derivative, it should be the same slope, is that for all functions?
Yeah, for all the next Taylor polynomials, the slope will be the same, right?
Well, like for the, as, for the first.
At zero, at zero.
Okay, okay.
It'll, it'll match the original function. Right, because all these, you can see all these polynomials, not only do they pass through the point zero one, they also all have the same slope at zero one. Right? They all have the same slope, and they all have, well, they don't, you know, as you keep going higher and higher, you know, the. They have the same second derivative, and they have the same third derivative and all that, right?
But in FX and the Taylor series.
Yeah, between, between, yeah, between the original function and the Taylor polynomial that we're at, whatever N value you choose.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so yeah, let's get into remainders now, I'm actually gonna do this with a textbook question. Uh, so let me, let me just give you one second to find that. And we'll be good to go. It's actually a textbook question, not from the work, it's from the, uh, from the, um. Um, things like this, okay. Okay, so our question is, is this, okay, this is, this is how I'm gonna set this up. So we're, we're gonna, now we're gonna try to, try to like identify, you know, remainders that are left, you know, between a Taylor polynomial and the original function. What is the difference between what the real answer should be and what the, um, Taylor polynomial is giving you? So we're gonna consider this function, F of X equals the cube root of X. That's what, that's the function that we're talking about now, okay? So first, let's find the first and second Taylor polynomials for F, um, at, centered at X equals eight. Okay? Yeah, so A equals eight. And we're gonna find T one of X and T two of X. Okay, so first of all, T one of X. Okay, so first of all, t one of x, t one of x. Is going to be uh the sum, n goes from zero to one, of the nth derivative of a n factorial, over n factorial. Uh x minus eight to the um to the n, so what is that exactly? Well, it's, so it's f at a, so f of eight, right? Plus. F prime at eight. Times x minus eight. And that's it, there you go. Well, what's f at eight? F at eight is two. F prime of x is one third x to the negative two thirds, pretty sure, if I can do one third minus one is negative two thirds, yeah. Evaluate that at eight. Evaluate that at eight, I get uh two negative uh for twen- one, one twelfth, I'm gonna check that, but. See if that's right. One third times something to the power of. Uh what was it, negative two thirds? Yeah, one twelfth is right. So that's good, let me make sure I'm, you know, recording and everything's okay, an hour into it would be a bad time to find that I'm not recording.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe.
Maybe check that, yeah. So. Can have my notes open, yeah, okay, so uh one twelfth, so we know that the set, the first degree Taylor polynomial is eight plus one twelfth x minus eight. It's the first degree Taylor polynomial, t one of x, and let's find the second degree Taylor polynomial. So we know that it's going to be the first degree. Twelfth, x minus eight, plus, so it's gonna be the second derivative at eight over two, x minus eight squared. Now, I did this without writing the series first, I'm just doing it, you know, just jumping right to what would the term be, but all I'm doing is I'm taking the last one, yeah.
That'd be two, by the way, wouldn't that be two?
Why, yeah.
Why?
It's f of eight is.
F of eight is two. It's a cube root of.
Oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, 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 here's, here's, oh, I wrote an eight again, uh two, yeah, I I wrote two up here, I just didn't know.
It's your lucky number for this weekend.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, so let's see. Let's see um what the second derivative at eight is gonna be, right, so if f prime of x, that was one third. X to the negative two thirds, then f double prime of x will be uh negative two ninths, x to the negative five thirds. Uh yep, evaluated at two is, who knows what? I don't, evaluated at eight, sorry. Evaluated at eight.
That's ironic.
What, what?
Cause you had a problem with the eight, you constantly said two.
Yeah, and now I, now I. That's my brain. Five thirds, negative two ninths, x, eight, uh yep, so that's negative one over one forty-four. Uh which, yeah, which is right. So what that tells me is that the second degree Taylor polynomial, so let me write it here, t one of x was uh two plus one twelfth, x minus eight. T two was two plus one twelfth, x minus eight, minus one forty-four. Times two, well, I'll write it like this, one forty-four, one over one forty-four, over two. Uh times x minus eight squared, so this is just gonna be one over two eighty-eight. Right, the negatives right there in the front. So those are first and second degree Taylor polynomials, great, that's what we wanna do, let's graph it, just take a look, it's good to have, you know, somewhat of a visual of what's happening here. So our um, our original function was uh x to the one third, so that's that. We're centering this at eight, right, so we're actually centering over here, oh boy. This mouse is weird, there, centering over here, so. Our first degree Taylor polynomial was two plus one twelfth times x minus eight. Okay, and notice that at, at eight, remember, we centered at eight, we didn't center at zero, we centered at eight, they, they intersect exactly at x equals eight. Great, that's what we want, so let's take a look at the next one. The second degree Taylor polynomial is the first degree Taylor polynomial plus another term, which is minus one over two eighty-eight. Times x minus eight squared. So you see, they kind of match for a better amount of time, right, if I make this, the original function dotted here, you can see, like, compare the two. The purple graph, which is the second degree, kind of matches better around eight, exactly at eight, they're all there, the slopes are gonna be the same with the, with the uh, yeah, slopes are both the same. But the second derivative is also gonna match with the second degree Taylor polynomial.
Wait, you have another question?
Yeah.
So if you wanna find, let's say, squ- like, cube root of, let's say, seven point nine eight, right? Would there be any difference between using any of the two Taylor series, or since it's so close, it doesn't really matter what you're gonna use?
Well, that's exactly what we're gonna get into, it's just like, how do you quantify how close you are, right, how do you quantify, right, you can, you can choose a value and compare the val- compare it, yeah. It'll be very close to the answer, it will be, you can see right here, right, the graphs are almost the same around eight. Right?
But like, around eight, like, even no matter how close you are to eight, it's, it would be better to use the second one over the first one, cause that's gonna give you.
That's true, exactly, it 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 will give, yeah, it will be a little closer with the. I might, maybe at some point, well, exactly at eight, they're all the same, right?
Yeah, it sounds like seven point nine nine.
Seven point nine 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 nine, they'll, probably your calculator will give you the same number, but they are slightly different, they're slightly not the same number.
Thank you.
Right? No problem, so, yeah. Okay, how do we quantify this, how do we quantify how close they are? Well, we use what's called um Taylor's remainder theorem, right? Uh or, you know what, actually, before we do that, yeah, yeah, use the two, so the next part of the question, I'm doing this from the textbook, so this was part, this is part A. Part B is to use the two polynomials to estimate the cube root of eleven. Cube root of eleven, which isn't really close to eight, but if you look at the graph, let's see how, what it, what it's like at eleven. At eleven, they're a little bit apart, but they're not too far, I mean, the purple graph looks like it's a lot closer, right? Than the green graph, it's a lot better of an estimation, but still just an estimation. So we're gonna evaluate the cube root of eleven, we're gonna estimate the cube root of eleven using the Taylor polynomial, so how do we do it, well? Taylor polynomial. Of uh eleven would be, uh we were estimating, did I just plug in eleven? Yeah, I just plugged in eleven, yeah, because our original function was the cube root of x, so this would be estimating the cube root of eleven. So that would be two plus one twelfth, eleven minus eight, whatever that is. And the second degree would also just plug in eleven, which would be two plus one twelfth, eleven minus eight, minus one, one over two eighty-eight. Times eleven minus eight squared, and I'll just plug this in, so two, uh eleven minus eight is three, so three over twelve is one over four, two plus a quarter is uh seven, uh nine quarters. Nine quarters. Um and then, so this is nine quarters, and then I wanna, I can't, I don't know how to subtract that, so I'm just gonna do this, so nine quarters minus. Three squared over two eighty-eight. So I got that this is seventy-one over thirty-two, and I'm gonna say that, what is that approximately, that's two point two one eight seven five. And nine over four. Is approximately.
Five or something? Uh, two point, two five, yeah, two.
Yeah, and then let's see what the cube root of eleven actually is. Cube root of eleven is, which, which I'm just saying here, you know, we're not supposed to know this in the question, but we're just supposed to, just to compare, is two point two two three nine eight, approximately. Keeps going, of course, so, well, this is right to two decimal places, and technically rounded to three decimal places, it's right, this is only right to two decimal places. So slightly better approximation here, right, closer. Um but let's try to quantify this in a different way, right, so this is where we get into Taylor's remainder theorem.
This is so trippy, the reason, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, yeah, yeah.
Uh the reason why we even did f at eight is because it's centered at eight equal eight, right? So that's why we can, that's why we started with that value, if it was at zero, then we'd have just had zero for the first term, and then whatever addition after that, it would still be the same.
Yeah, that's right.
Except, okay, yeah.
It would, it would be x minus zero, which is just x.
It'd be, yeah, it'd just be x, it's just like, because we substitute x twice, like, in the solution, it kinda missed me out, but it makes sense now.
Makes sense now, okay.
Yeah, the use, the usefulness for Taylor series is if you have a function that's very hard to uh graph, let's say, but you can turn it into a Taylor series. And you wanna find a value at a specific location, then if you center the Taylor series at or close to that location. You don't have to take as many terms to get a good approximation of that point.
Yeah, yeah, and wh- while we're here, I mean, I may as well, may as well say a little spiel, uh well, if I have e to the x. You know, if you say e squared, you probably think e times z, right, e times z, which makes sense, and that is what e squared is, it's e times z, for real numbers. But what if I told you e to the i? Right, then you don't really know what to do, cause what does that mean, multiply e by itself i times, I don't know how to do that, I can't do that. Well, sure, we can't do it like that, but what about the Taylor series for x, or specifically the Maclaurin series for x? The Maclaurin series for x, uh I have it here, is, it's the sum. It's the sum, n goes from zero to infinity, of x to the n over n factorial. And all of a sudden, e to the i is possible. We can just i to the n over n factorial, we know how to put i to a certain power, we know how to, you know, integer powers, that works. I to the, you know, multiply by itself some amount of times, it's fine, n factorial, all of a sudden, I have a value for e to the i, it's this. It's not a nice, it's not a, you know, something we're used to working with, but it is something, and we have a whole new perspective on the function, e to the x. So in a sense, right?
Something like this, like, something like this, they use to calculate pi.
Exactly, well, that, this is exactly what we did in linear algebra, e to the i pi equals negative one. The reason that's true is because e to the i pi equals um the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of i pi to the n over n factorial. And somehow supposedly this converges to negative one, I, I, that part, I don't know how to do, but. This part converges to negative one, and that's why this is true. Right?
Okay, back to something that we were doing earlier, which I think it was what, f at k, I think you're using k, and then it's the summation of. Whatever from zero to the value of k.
Uh yeah.
Is that exactly what you're doing right now?
This is infinite, this is infinite, this is infinite here, so the k is the Taylor polynomial, it's like we're stopping the infinite series at some point.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
This is just talking about, yeah, this is just talking about, the reason we use these Taylor polynomials is because it's another perspective on a function. Right, it lets us do things like e to the i, that's one example, lets us do things like e to the i, or e to the i pi being negative one.
But also, let's do integrals and derivatives.
Uh yeah, exactly, yeah.
Do it on the series.
Exactly, and sometimes that's the only way to do it.
Which technically, couldn't you just turn everything into a Taylor series and take easy derivatives and integrals?
Yes, you could, easy is not necessarily the right, you know, because they're infinite series, they're sometimes hard to work with. But you, you know, sometimes it's the only way to do it, right, like, if we're gonna talk about it a little later, but the integral. You know, the integral of e to the negative x squared d x has no elementary solutions, you have to write the solution as a power function. As a Taylor series, you have to write the solution of this as a.
Interesting.
Um so, there's certain situations where that's true.
Also, and we can, it's a bit trippy, but you can also raise e to the, a matrix, so just let us think.
Some, someone watched the three blue, one brown video recently.
Yeah.
Someone recently saw that video on April Fools, yes.
Who, who, who comes, who, who just goes and be like, you know what, let's raise e to a matrix like.
Yeah, but this is how you do it, this is how you do it, you do it with the infinite series, and then all of a sudden, it has meaning.
Would you have to find the diagonalization of the matrix first, to get the value, and then raise it to that R?
I forgot it.
Okay, let's not, let's not.
Let's not, it doesn't really matter, you do it like this, you do it like this, you plug in a matrix here, and even though that doesn't mean, make sense to say multiply e by a, by itself a matrix times. It could make sense here as a polynomial, as part of a polynomial. You know, you can raise a matrix to a certain power, and that works, and you can divide it by a scalar, so it works in here.
Uh yeah, that's, wow, that makes sense.
Yeah, this is a little over our heads in terms of what we're like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As an engineer, cause you might actually have an equation you want to, like, analyze, but it's a little. This is a little more like into like theoretical math stuff than it is into like.
I feel like this is for the M boys, right, it's not for us.
Yeah, this is, this is to give a, to give a little bit of motivation as to why we're doing these random things with function.
No, if you don't know how to solve, okay, basically, if you don't know how to solve uh the mini test question, you're like. Sorry, sir, I didn't know how to solve the mini test question, but I'm gonna raise you e to a power of matrix and just what.
And yeah, and impress him, there you go, do that.
Yeah, yeah, he's just gonna be like, wow, you know what, I'll raise your mark.
Okay, guys, let's, let's get going, let's keep, let's keep going, okay, let's keep, let's, let's keep moving, because I gotta, you know, gotta make some progress, so. Okay, we're here now, we got um. We got our uh two approximations for a square root of um uh eleven, a cube root of eleven. Okay, let's use now, the next part of the question from the textbook, I'll just go by that, it says, okay, for part C, use Taylor's theorem to bound the error. So we're trying to bound. The error. Error at uh x equals eleven, right? So for that value, what is the bound of the error, right, so, so the error is this, the function. The function is the nth degree Taylor polynomial plus the nth remainder. So think about this for a second. I'm saying that, you know, whatever the nth degree Taylor polynomial is, you know, it's off by some amount. Whatever amount that is, it's R n, put those two things together, you get exactly f of x, exactly, equals, you get exactly f of x. There is some exact amount. R n of x that you are off by, by using the nth degree Taylor polynomial at x. Okay, R n is this amount, something that would be really nice to have is to know uh how big. Is R n, or what's the value is R n of x, right? Or, you know, what's, what the value is would be nicer, but how big is it, you know, maybe a maximum amount, maximum. Maximum would be nice to have, right, because then we know that, you know, we can, you know, we can gauge our error to be within that maximum, right, we can, you know, you know, take into account error like that. You know, maybe our, maybe our error is less, but if we know a maximum, then that's good. So. Um the next thing is Taylor's theorem, and I, it's sort of just something you're gonna have to accept. Uh there's, like, I can, I can give some sort of, you know, demonstration, but uh it's a little bit too advanced, so. The Taylor's theorem is this, that the nth remainder is equal to something, notice, before I even write it. This is a big thing, I'm writing that the remainder is exactly gonna be something here, exactly. Okay, because it's, it's, you know, if, if we could evaluate what that is, that would be really nice, we'd know how big exactly R n is. But you're gonna see in a second why we can't do that, but you'll see, so what, what is it equal to? It's equal to the n plus one derivative at some value c over n plus one factorial. X minus a, absolute value of x minus a to the n plus one. Okay. Okay. This is what it's exactly equal to, but hold on, what's c here, why did I write f of c, what is c? Okay, c is a value that we don't know, that's, that's the best way to say it, I guess, c is some. X, some, some value between. X and a, and what Taylor's theorem is saying is that there exists some c, some value of c that I can put into this. Right, that makes this equality true, there is some, it exists somewhere. We don't know what it is, we, we don't learn how to find it, uh it's very hard to find. So that's not what we're trying to do, we're not trying to find what c is, but Taylor's theorem is saying that, yeah, sorry, go for it.
Sorry about that, sorry, I was like, why is it n plus one?
That's just the formula, that's just part of the formula, you can kind of think of it as like the next term, right, it'd be the next term in the, in the series, um, right? That's just the formula, that's just part of the formula. You can kinda think of it as like the next term, right? It'd be the next term in the, in the series, um, right? So there is some value of the next term that I can put there in the numerator, that would give me exactly what RN is.
My apologies, I didn't really hear you, so.
Don't worry, don't worry, don't worry, don't worry.
Yeah.
That's what Taylor's theorem is saying, so it's a, it's a pretty profound thing, it's a pretty important thing that's happening here. There exists some C, okay, again, we can't find that C, that whole, we're not, the point isn't to find that C. Um, this is very, very similar to the mean value theorem from, uh, MTH one forty. Uh, which we didn't really talk about that much, it's just sort of a theoretical thing, uh, and the mean value theorem is actually a special case of Taylor's theorem. It's a special case. Um, so this is actually the more general theorem that works in, um. Uh, more generally, and, uh, before, for power series, so. Okay, how can we use this though to help us? Let's say, for example, I'm gonna choose some value D, which is, you know, which is. Let me see this for a second. Um. Okay, what's, what's changing here? What's changing here? The thing that we don't know is F of C, F, F, the N plus one derivative of evaluated C. That's what we don't know, everything else we can figure out, right? So what if we just assumed this to be the maximum, at its maximum? At its max, right? And let's call that max, you know, let's call that max M. So M is the maximum. Of F to the N plus one at C. Not F to the N plus one, the N plus one derivative of F evaluated at C. Then, if we just say that's at its maximum possible value, RN of X is gonna be less than that. Or equal to, could be equal to, but it's gonna be less than that, less than M over N plus one factorial. The absolute value of X minus A, N plus one. So if we could figure what that is, if we can figure out what the maximum is there, everything else we can plug in, right? Everything else we can just plug in, and we have an upper bound now, because before I couldn't plug out in up here, cause I don't know what C is. I don't know what C is. C is this number that exists, um, that makes this equality true, but there's, we don't know any way to find it. So if I just say, let's just say, let's just say that that numerator is the maximum that that function is, that the N plus one derivative can be. Usually over some interval that we're talking about, so the question usually gives you some interval. Um, so, you know, it's the maximum, uh, over some interval. Question gives you an interval that you're talking about, you'll see. Um, and whatever that maximum is, do the operation there, do the, do the, you know, this expression, evaluate the expression there. And RN is gonna be less than it, because right, we're maximizing it, less than or equal to, because if it coincidentally is that, you know. This C value is exactly what, um, would maximize, you know, what M would be, or what, what this would be, right? At a maximum, then it would be equal to, but usually it's less than, right? It would be less than. And there we go, this is the functional. Use of Taylor's theorem with remainder. Right, so this is.
Is this supposed to be in absolute value, or does it not matter? Is it still true regardless of absolute value or not?
Um.
Cause normally we write like ap-, oh, maybe we do absolute value in case it's either above or below what it, what the actual value is.
Maybe, possibly, I'm not exactly sure why this is absolute value, but it is for sure an absolute value. Um.
I think it just means that, cause you could either be, you could either be overshooting or undershooting, but the remainder is.
Yeah, oh, I should also, I should also, yeah, this is the absolute value, maybe it's, oh, no, no, may, maybe what it is is that, um. No, 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 this is what it is, is that, that is true, but what we really care about is the absolute value of the remainder. So we take the absolute value of both sides. This is already positive, this is already positive. Or actually, this might not be positive, why would that be positive?
Yeah, no, M is also absolute value, I think, cause.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right, absolutely, there, yep, you're right. Although you put it, you usually, you write it there, yeah. So is the maximum of the absolute value of the N plus one derivative? Ooh, maybe that's where I was making a mistake on a question before, that is possibly it. Okay, think about that, um, but. Yeah, so we need the, so the absolute value of the remainder, which means, you know, it's plus or minus this amount. Plus or minus this amount, so whatever value we get, plus or minus that expression there is where the answer lays, the actual real answer lays. And there we go, we found a, a bound for, I think this is the functional. Functional use of Taylor's theorem. Okay, we're, we're gonna use it right now, we're gonna bound the error on this approximation up here. Right? So to bound the error, right? Um, these are the steps to do that. Our function F of X is the cube root of X. We are evaluating X at eleven, right? And we're centered at A equals eight. Okay, but we're evaluating it with this Taylor polynomial. So, let's plug everything in we know here. Uh, let's start with about, let's say, let's start by saying, what's the remainder? Remainder. I should say remainder bounds, we don't know an exact amount, the whole point is that we don't know an exact amount, but we know a bounds, the remainder bounds for, let's do T one of X. Okay, T one of X. So T one of X, okay, is the first degree Taylor polynomial, so we got up here, I'll write it again, T of X. That was, uh, two plus one twelfth X minus eight. Minus one over, oh no, that's it, there you go, that was the, uh, first degree. So to bound the error, we know that R one of eight, nope, of eleven. Is less than or equal to the maximum, which we're gonna figure out separately. Over one plus one factorial, eleven minus eight, absolute value of eleven minus eight. To the one plus one, I'm just using exactly this formula right here. Eleven minus eight to the one plus one, one plus one factorial, M, all that. We're really close, we just need to figure out what M is, so remember that M, M is. Write it nicely, how do they have it here? M is, uh, greater than or equal to the absolute value of F N plus one X, absolutely. So, okay, N plus one, so this is gonna be, uh, our particular N is one, right? For the, for the first degree Taylor polynomial, it's gonna be these, uh, double prime of X. Um, over an interval, let me see this for a second. Do we care about an interval?
M was at C, is, is C the?
Don't they have to give you an interval, otherwise?
Not.
Don't know where to evaluate, or do you just evaluate it at eight?
Oops, I shouldn't have erased those, but yeah, you, um. Let's graph it, let's graph what the, uh, second derivative of X is, let's graph, so the second derivative of X, of, of F, I mean, not of X. Uh, so F of X was, oh, I already know what the second derivative is, is, don't I? It's up here. Second derivative is negative two over nine X to the negative five over three. Two over nine X to the negative five over three. Um, negative two over nine X to the negative five over three. So we have this. That doesn't look good, um, is that? Right, yeah, looking at the, looking at the writing here, give me one second, that's what I said. Since F.
Is this a textbook question, or is this a?
Textbook question, it's a textbook, it's textbook question.
Question doesn't say what the bound is?
No. Oh, the bound we use is H to eleven, that's the bound we use.
Oh.
There we go, H to eleven.
Cause it has to be in between.
Yep.
X, uh, okay.
So the bound we use is H to eleven, you have to have a bound. There we go.
What about, uh, I'm just a bit confused with the C, wasn't it F to the N plus one of C?
Yeah, but.
I'm just confusing myself.
Here, that's up here, right?
Yeah.
Of C, but we don't know, C is just some value that makes this exactly equal, right? That makes this exactly equal. We don't know what that number is, we also don't know how to find that number, right? Right, so, oh no, this should, that was an X there, is that what was confusing you maybe? That should be an X. That was possibly what was confusing me, right? Um, so M is the maximum of the next derivative over some interval. And the interval we use for this particular case is between zero and eleven, sorry, between eight and eleven, can't speak, eight and eleven. And so we have to decide what's the maximum of the function between eight and eleven, and also a quick, quick note, uh, it's the absolute value of this. So if I just, no, I can't just make that thing, I just say absolute value of that, we get that. And we're going between, uh, X equals eight, X equals eleven. Whoops, that should be two different lines. X equals eleven. So what's the maximum between these two points? Right? Well, it's either, at either end, so here, it's at a height of zero point zero zero six nine. And here, it's at a height of zero point zero zero four one. That's not right, hold on, what happened? How is? The largest value for. The largest value for F double prime of X on the interval occurs at X equals. Eight, that's double prime. And F double prime. Oh, oh.
Know what, we know what eight is, if we know what that equation evaluated at eight is.
Let me just check something, is this? Oh yeah, no, we don't have a problem, we don't have a problem, I just, uh, I don't know why I didn't check that, we don't have a problem. It's just that they write it as a fraction, here is a decimal, that's all the problem was, that, that's the whole thing, um, yeah, we're good.
Oops.
So, um, yeah, yeah, so the maximum is, so the maximum value. Well, what we get as the maximum value is, um, whatever F double prime of eight is, right? Which is one over one forty-four, so I should be clear, absolute value of that is one over one forty-four. Which is, which is this, so at eight here, we see we have a higher value, then at nine, we don't have a higher value. Now, how do you know without graphing it, that there is no maximum in between? Well, what you would do is you'd take the next derivative, right? You take the next derivative. I mean, this is kind of a calc one thing, really, is maximize a function in an interval, right? So you have to check the, the next derivative up, check for the zeros there, because that's where it has a maximum, it's a critical point, right? Maximum or minimum, or, well, it's a critical point, and then also check the, the bounds, right, the outside of the interval. And if you check all those things, one of them will be the biggest, and that will be the maximum, all in absolute values. So the maximum we got was one forty-four, so what that means is that our remainder. Absolute value, the remainder is between, so one plus one factorial is two factorial, which is two, so one forty-four times two. Absolute value of three, well, the absolute value doesn't matter, so it's just three squared. Three, I'll put one over three squared, so the remainder. How do we read this? The remainder of the first degree Taylor polynomial at eleven. Is whatever three squared over two eighty-eight is. What that means is that the real answer to whatever F of eleven is, is between three squared over two eighty-eight, plus or minus in each direction. Uh, is that right?
Ready to one forty-four point two, come on, yeah.
Uh, not point, that's a multiplication.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so one, one forty-four, it's, it's M, so it's one, one over one forty-four over two factorial. M was, M was that, M was the, that which we got here. Which is the, which was the maximum value over the interval.
Okay, so we just did the second derivative at eleven?
Yeah.
For M.
Uh, second derivative, no, 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 second derivative at eight, because. That's where the maximum value occurs, right?
Well, if, if you take eleven, it's like smaller than if you take square root of like three.
You don't have to worry about square roots, just look here at, at the absolute, so this is the, the black line you see here, is the absolute value of the second derivative. Right? And I'm trying to maximize that between eight and eleven. So all we look at is, well, you know, check in the middle, is there any maximum values in the middle? Nope. You can do that by taking the next derivative and doing, you know, however you wanna do that, um, but then also check the endpoint, so we have. We have a maximum here, well, we have a value here of zero point zero zero six nine, and on the other side, we have zero point zero zero four one. So, zero point zero zero six nine is the maximum, which is one over one forty-four. Mentioned that here, zero point zero zero six nine.
Ah.
Is approximately, approximately one over one forty-four, that's why.
I'm taking the second derivative because, uh, the second derivative is like one after, cause, cause we did basically the Taylor polynomial. Kind of the first derivative, whatever, taking the second derivative, cause you have to go one further than that.
Yep, right there, N plus one, the maximum of the N plus one derivative, right? That's what M is, M is the maximum of the N plus one, N plus one derivative, right, so. Okay, let's move on, uh, well, let's, let's do it.
Can we just do a summary of this one, cause like.
How about this, how about this? I'm gonna, I'm right, right now, I'm gonna do it for the second Taylor polynomial, T two of X. Right? I'm about to do it for the second P, the polynomial, we're gonna see what the error is on that, so I'll do the whole process one more time here with.
Alright.
This second one, so let's just remember what our second Taylor polynomial was. It was, um, two plus one twelfth, uh, X minus eight. Minus one over two eighty-eight, X minus eight squared, okay? So we wanna bound the error on this, we wanna bound what R two of eleven is, right? R two of eleven is less than M over, uh, two plus one factorial. Absolute value of, well, eleven minus eight. Two plus one. All I'm doing here is I'm just using the formula for the, uh, remainder, right? Just using the. Formula for the remainder, so I'll, I'll take a. Take a screenshot here of it, just so we can put it on screen in nice writing, it's of course in my notes and. Find it there. Right, so that's, this is the remainder formula. Formula, there you go, and box it and everything, that's what we're using here. So, R two of eleven is less than or equal to. M over two plus one factorial, eleven minus eight, and, uh, two plus one, as the exponent. So let's simplify this a little bit, R two of eleven, the absolute value of it is less than or equal to M over six. Three cubed, M three cubed. Okay, what's M now? We just have to figure out what M is, well, right here. M is the maximum value of the third derivative, of the N plus one derivative, which is the third derivative in this case, cause N is two, N is two. So we wanna maximize. Maximize, uh, the third derivative of X on H to eleven, inclusive. Right?
If you, yeah, we're here if you, if you can confirm it, yes.
Yes, good, okay, we're good, um, so maximize the third derivative of X on H to eleven, okay, well, what's the third derivative? Not the, I keep saying third derivative of X, third der, third derivative of F. The third derivative of F is, well, the second derivative was, what was the second derivative, negative two over nine X to the nine. Negative two over nine X to the negative five over three, that's F double prime of X is equal to that. F triple prime of X is equal to, well, it's going to be. Ten over twenty-seven X to the negative eight over three. Okay, maximize this, you can do it however you want, I will do it on Desmos here for us right now. Again, I shouldn't have deleted that, I'm probably gonna have to type that again, but that's okay, um, so what I have, ten over twenty-seven X to the negative eight over three. Ten over twenty-seven, X to the negative eight over three, okay? So, again, maximize this over that interval, well, there's no. So again, maximize this over that interval, well, there's no critical points between. At eight, it's at zero point zero one, at eleven, it's at zero point zero zero one, let's zoom in a little bit. See if it gives us a better answer, so zero point zero zero one four five. Or.
You probably should have zoomed out.
Zero point zero zero, zero point, what was it, zero point zero zero one four five, this is zero point zero zero zero, 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 six, two. So the maximum is still at eight over here. Right, the maximum is still at eight, so.
Saying zero point zero one again.
I zoomed out, I zoomed out, yeah, I zoomed out. So we wanna take that third derivative, it's better to just take it and just evaluate it at eight, because we know the maximum happens at eight by looking at the graph. So it's just going to be ten over twenty-seven, eight to the negative eight over three, um, and I'll plug that into my calculator and see what it gives me. Ten over twenty-seven.
We're, we're graphing the function, but I mean, it's also, just remember if it's a, it's a reciprocal function. So a larger X has to result in a smaller.
Yeah.
Smaller value.
Yeah. Okay, I got, um, I got five over three thousand four hundred and fifty-six, I'm gonna go with that. Let me write it again. Five over three thousand four hundred and fifty-six. Okay, and that is our maximum value, right, it was already absolute value, absolute valued, so it doesn't have to, doesn't really matter, so now we know. That the remainder. Of the second degree Taylor polynomial at X equals eleven is less than. Five over six times three, four, five, six, three cubed is twenty-seven. Um, and yeah, so plus or minus this in either direction is the true answer, let's see which remain, which remainder is like better, right? So this one here was, uh, three squared over two eighty-eight, so that's, um, equals approximately. Zero point zero three one two five. And this one. Is five times twenty-seven over six times three, four, five, six. So this is approximately.
The second one just looks more, like more, uh, better, like it just looks better second.
Yeah, five one oh, six five one oh four, there we go. So you see this one is zero point zero three one two five, plus or minus that in either direction, and this one is plus or minus that in either direction, so better, a lot better. Right, al- already like our, our approximations are pretty good. Right, and you can kind of imagine how this would be a lot easier before calculators, right, like, you know, because calculators, we can just, we can just. Type in whatever it is we have, right, but if we didn't have calculators, this would probably be the easiest way to find the square root of eleven or the cube root of eleven. Right?
Yeah, it probably would.
There are other methods, but like how else would you find the cube root of eleven? Right, I don't know how I would do it. Yeah, I would do this.
Plot twist, answers that are stored in your calculators are actually developed from that, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, plot, no, plot twist, this somewhere in your calculator, who does try and error for every math question.
That's true, that's true, that's, that's the real thing that's happening here.
So explain syntax error then.
So the. He didn't have time, he didn't have enough time to think about it.
Wait, someone saying something?
So like when you did the syntax error, the person who did the try and error in your calculator didn't have enough time to think about it, so just give you a syntax error.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, um, someone else was saying something, uh, was it Abdul?
Yeah, I was, I was saying like, so the, you know, the cube, you, you, the cube root of something was not for the common people to know.
That's, that's true.
Scientists and very smart people.
That's true.
Yeah, I guess so, you're right.
But this would, again, this would probably be the easiest way, I think, to do it.
Also, I have a good feeling that like before calculators were a thing. Like the living conditions around the world were in such a way that like the square, like the cube root of, would be like your least of your worries.
That's true.
Yeah, I guess it weren't so significant.
Well, before calculators were a thing, we already sent someone to the moon.
Wait, I mean, they did have their own version of calculators.
They had their own version of calculators, but still.
It's just, it wasn't.
It was like, um. They, they had calculators, but they couldn't do anything advanced.
They didn't have handheld calculators, I don't think, they didn't have handheld.
But they had, they had their pretty big machineries that did the same thing.
They couldn't do anything that wasn't, uh, basic algebra, because they couldn't do like, um, like an exponential function.
Yeah, yeah.
Back to this, uh, so it's just T to that, um, like T to the two plus R to the two is equal to something, what was it equal to, like?
Wait, I don't know what T to the two, what's T to the two?
The Taylor series?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. The, the second degree Taylor, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't, yeah, it was a T to the N plus R to the N is equal to something?
Oh, up here, up here, okay, yeah, TN of X plus RN of X is equal to the actual function F of X.
Oh, like, cause they were, before we were just saying like FX is equal to TN of X, but that's not actually.
Well, it's not equal, no, it's not, we weren't, we weren't saying it was equal, we're saying it was approximating. It was approximate.
No, this is even, with, with the remainder is just a bigger approximation.
Well, with the remainder, it's equal, with the remainder, there's, there's an equal sign here, right, with the remainder is now equal, it's just that we don't know, we can't find an exact value for the remainder. Right, that would be this, that. Well, the best we can do is bound it, is give us, give an upper bound, you know, though it's less than something. So in, what we know is that it's less than this expression right here. And that's.
So just to kind of recap, so take the Taylor series at how many ever terms you want, then go one derivative higher, find the M. Then if you're.
Maximize it, maximize the.
Maximize him, and how do you maximize it, like, like you just kind of like, you can just, like you don't have to do any math, you just kind of think about it logically, like if you have a square root function, you. It would make sense that the small value would be a bigger one, right?
Well, no, you, you can do it mathematically, you can do like analytically, right, so there's, let, let me describe, you know, there's three ways you could do it. One, plug it into Desmos, look at which side is higher, okay, that's what I've been doing. Second option is think about it for a second, you know, if we have a, you know, reciprocal function and it's in absolute values, it's probably going to be increasing. Uh, well, decreasing from left to right. Right, and the third way to do it is take the N plus two derivative. Find the critical points, find the zeros, those are the places of the maximum, right? If any of those exist between the interval, then check those, otherwise just check the endpoints, only check the endpoints. No graphing, no thinking needed, just check the endpoints. And then, you know, it's, you also have to, you don't know without looking at it, if there's gonna be any, uh, critical points between the endpoints, between the endpoints of the interval. So to check that, you take the next derivative, the N plus two derivative, find the zeros of it, which is where the critical points are. And, uh, check those X values in your N plus one derivative. See if those are any, see if those are maximums, if they lie in the interval, if they don't lie in the interval, they don't matter.
So like, like on the, on the mini test, for example, would you see that just trying to make kind of sense of it logically is the best con method to do so?
On the test, I'd say that, and if you're stuck, take the next derivative, find the zeros, check the endpoints, all that.
Cause like, I, like, yeah, cause I was thinking to like, cause that would take a long time to like find out, depending on like what they give you, cause they should give you like. Like their bad functions, like you can't.
Yeah, they could give you a weird one, yeah.
So, but you, but I'm guessing it should be pretty, like, I'm guessing they're gonna make it like fairly obvious, like what to like pick for. You know, C, I'm, I'm guessing they're gonna do something like weird.
Well, careful, we're not, we're not picking C, but we're picking a maximum value, yeah, yeah, we're, we're picking, we're finding where the maximum value is.
And then the rest is, and the rest is just like plug and chug, just like bye bye, whatever, multiply mine.
So A Desmos, B what, and then C what?
A was Desmos, B was just think about the function, think about, you know, if we look at, if we look at here, we see this. The maximum of this would probably be on the left side, there's no reason for there to be any critical points, any like fluctuations up and down, um, between.
Probably because the.
Because there's a, because just, it's just a power function, so it probably only has, you know, it's a reciprocal function too, so it has an asymptote at zero. Um, and otherwise, it's just smooth down from there, right, and we're evaluating something like that, if I were to try to sketch this, it would look like that. So I would assume right away that the maximum is on the left side.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's usually like, think about it like this way, usually in a polynomial, the bumps happen when you have multiple terms added to each other. But if you just have one term, there's gonna be any bumps, no matter what, the exponent.
Yeah, yeah.
Or it was like a.
They don't expect you to have a calculator in this course. They're not gonna give you some function that's like you have to like calculate each term to, like, for every number in between the, in between.
Yeah, no, no.
The interval?
Like, they're gonna make it obvious enough that you can figure it out.
You can figure it out, yeah.
Oh, like between the interval, you mean?
Cause they don't, they, they don't expect you that you're using a calculator, so it has to be something you can determine, like, just by looking.
And also I do have a. Okay, yeah, like they go and test, like they testing the Taylor thing, and I gotta test if you know max or min, it's like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's true, that's not what they're testing, that's not what they're testing, that's true. Okay, guys, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take about a ten minute break, and then we're gonna keep going afterwards, that's essentially all of six point one. Uh, yep, that's not six, six, six point three, that, that is all of six point three. Uh, and so then afterwards, we're gonna talk about six point four, there's not that much in six point four in terms of like content, but there's a lot of weird questions, so we're gonna go through some weird questions.
Can I mention one thing before people go?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a question, there's a couple of questions from the textbook, because we just did the remainder stuff, there's a couple of questions from the textbook that work. That were you, it's a remainder question, but you do it in reverse. So what it's, it gives you how much the remainder, like how, what the remainder is.
We'll do one of those.
And you have to find out how many terms you have to take so that the remainder will be less than or equal to this value.
We'll do one of those, I have one from Horowitz here.
Backwards and it's a little, it's a little weirder than doing it, like.
So they gave you the function and they gave you the remainder, and you're supposed to take N amount of integral derivatives?
You gotta go backwards to what you would normally do, like instead of, you would have to, you know the remainder, you know what the function is, you have to build. Your, um, like you have to find the max and everything, that's all the same, but then you have to find the value of N that would give you that remainder.
Oh, for T, so you're trying to find T at N?
Yeah, so it's not, it's not as, as clean as like, oh, I can just plug in eight and then that would be the value, the max value, the max value is gonna be some N plus one.
We have to find the N, yeah.
Ew, okay, okay, alright.
Okay, guys, back in ten minutes, okay, I'll be back in ten minutes and we'll keep going.
How is everyone like feeling about the Taylor series? Do you guys find it like difficult, so-so, easy?
It's, it's alright, like everything else, you just have to practice, I guess.
I don't think it's that bad to be honest, I agree, it's really straightforward, it's like, like, if you have the, I kind of make you a formula, you know, the. F at A plus, the derivative of F at A plus, you know, that one. I find it's really easy, to be honest, like, not really easy, but I find it's like very, very straightforward. And after I just a matter of like not messing up like algebra or.
No, I'm just saying, like, it's, you're, you're a lot likely to make mistakes, but yeah, that's the way, but, alright, I'm gonna head out for a second, but yeah, that's, that's true.
Okay. Does anyone wanna chat or not a good time? I guess it's not a good time, no one really feels talkative today. It do be like that sometimes. By the way, while Adam is on the break, like, you can ask me some questions, like I'm not Adam, but like I, I kind of understand the topic pretty well, so. If you guys have any like kind of questions, either about like the day of the mini test or things like that, just let me know, I'm trying to hack out. Uh, I'm trying to hack out.
Okay, hi guys, I am back. Ready to. Start again, hello, there we go, I am back. Um, is everybody here?
Yes, hello.
Yes, good, okay, sounds good. So. Yeah.
Are we doing like nine today or?
Nine thirty probably, nine thirty.
Hmm, let me see.
Okay.
And now we're doing uh, the six point four.
Not quite yet, we have one more question that I wanna do from six point three. Um. Yeah. Yeah, okay, so. Um, we're gonna do this question, which is what, you know, was suggested before, so use t four of x. For cosine of x at a equals zero. To, I should just type this. Uh, to approximate.
Same thing as the first question since we started.
This is the first question since we started, yeah.
Okay.
To approximate, um, uh, cosine of, cosine of. That, uh, I'll put, I'll write something in there manually, and bound the error. Also, find the interval of, interval where? The error is less than one over ten to the five. Okay, and we're approximating cosine of pi over twenty. Okay, so first step of this is to find the fourth Taylor polynomial of cos x. Um, uh, well, it's, it's the fourth Maclaurin, Maclaurin polynomial. Um, but yeah, that's the same thing for here. Um, so to do that, well, let's just start, what would it be? Well, it would be the, uh, sorry, the, the fourth. The fourth degree Taylor polynomial, I'm gonna do this without the series, so it's gonna be f of zero, well, I'll write this as. No, no, I'll write it as f's and then we'll do it after, f of zero, plus f prime of zero, x, x. Plus f double prime of zero, x squared. Plus f over two, plus f triple prime of zero. X cubed over three, uh, that's the third, and then plus f. Quadruple prime of zero. Yep, you're right. Uh, and then for factorial, x to the four, okay, so this is it, now let's figure out what all these values are. F of zero is one, f prime of zero is zero. F double prime of zero, so let's just write it here, f, f of x equals cos x. F prime of x is negative sine x. F double prime of x is negative cos x. F triple prime of x is sine x, and f quadruple prime. Of x is negative, oh, is cos x. So, uh, well, one. Zero. Negative one. Right, plus, uh, f triple prime is zero, quadruple prime is, cos is one, so it's just gonna be. Um, plus one over four factorial, x to the four. And that's t four of x. Any questions about how I got that? I just did what was on the top of the screen there. I, I just did, um. Just did this, evaluated everything I need to evaluate, couple of them were zero, like this is zero, this. This was zero, so I just had three terms, there you go, okay, so there's my t four of x. For cosine of x at a equals zero. And we're gonna approximate pi over twenty. So, um, well, let's figure out what pi over twenty would be, right, so this is cos, this is approximating cos x, so if to approximate cos pi over twenty, I just plug in pi over twenty. So, cos, uh, yeah, cos pi over twenty is approximately. T four of pi over twenty, which is equal to one minus, well, whatever, you can just plug it into a calculator. So, one minus a half times something squared, plus, that's supposed to be plus, yeah, it's supposed to be plus. Plus. One over four times three times two, times something to the four, the something is pi over twenty. And. Pi over twenty, so I get that this is equal to, so cos pi over twenty is approximately zero point nine eight seven six eight. Okay, so we approximated it, now bound the error, you know, so this is what we got, now, where is the actual value, within what range? So, the fourth, now doing a different color, the fourth remainder at pi over twenty. Is bounded between, okay, the maximum value over n, so over, it would be five factorial. And plus one factorial, um, absolute value of pi over twenty minus zero to the five.
I have a question.
Yep.
So, is it pi over two or pi over twenty?
Twenty.
So why did you write pi over two? Ah, okay.
Cause I don't know what I'm writing.
Oh, it's okay, no.
That was, is that your only question? Okay.
Yes, it's my only question, you can go ahead. I just, I was just, oh, I'll be confused.
Okay, uh, you have, I get that you have a cosine equal to the, what was the purpose of doing the t over four? If you're just gonna, you're just gonna evaluate at cosine pi over twenty.
I didn't. No, no, I, I, I never typed in my calculator cosine pi over twenty, I only typed this in, evaluated at pi over twenty.
Oh, they're ridiculously close then, okay.
Yeah, is that, is this what you got when you typed in cosine pi over twenty?
Uh, well, three, well, after that, like after that digit, it's like three, four, zero, six.
Yeah, so here I get three, six, one, four, as the next ones.
Oh, for, for the t?
For the t, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's what I get, so notice, notice my use of the signs here, this is approximately t four, and t four is exactly that.
Okay.
Right? Um, okay, so now bounding the error, well, we just, we're pretty much there, we need to find just what, so it's, it's the five again. Five, I, I need to find what m is, what is the maximum value, the maximum absolute value, the next derivative can have? I don't even have to think about this, it's one. The reason that is, is because we're only talking about sine and cosine functions here, right? The next derivative is just gonna be either a sine or cosine function, right? And those have a maximum of one, so that's the maximum over the interval. Oh, hold on, over the interval, wait a second. Um, we have an interval to think about, so the interval is from zero to pi over twenty. So never mind, we can't just do it that simply, that's how, see how he did it here. Zero point nine eight seven seven, yep, the fifth derivative maximized, da-da, so m equals sine pi, yeah, okay. So, not that, not what I said, because uh, I was, when I said that, I was, I was assuming that the interval we're talking about is like from zero to pi. Or from zero to pi over two, but that's not the interval we're talking about. We're talking about, um, the interval from zero to pi over twenty, so what we need to do is that the fifth derivative. Right, we need to take the, so we're just gonna write here, m, to get that is you maximize. Maximize the fifth derivative of x, um, in. Uh, is inclusive zero to pi over twenty. So what's the fifth derivative of x? That's just negative sine x. Okay, we need to maximize negative sine x, uh, between zero and pi over twenty, actually, we need to maximize the absolute value of, um. The fifth derivative, so essentially, we just need to maximize, um, so negative sine x is gonna look like this. The absolute value is gonna look like. This, right, it's gonna look like that, so, uh, zero. And pi over twenty is some tiny, tiny distance away, so pi over twenty is gonna be the maximum bit. So what that means is that m is equal to, um. The absolute value of negative sine pi over twenty. So m is. Well, whatever, m is sine, sine pi over twenty.
Uh, so. The error is r, right, when they said find the error, like.
Yeah, bound the error, they, you can't really find an error, but you can bound the error.
Uh, which, which is r, and then r is equal to the maximum over the, whatever, like. M over, uh, f five factorial times x minus eight, which is centered at zero, so it's just zero.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, what happened to the, what happened to the pi over twenty minus zero to the fifth power, to that? And then, um. Use, the reason it's like, it's all, obviously gonna be pi over twenty because the absolute, it was targeted from zero. And we know that the sine function, like it gradually goes up and then goes down, so we are assuming that it's, it has to be higher than zero, which is the lowest point.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the maximum value occurs, the maximum value in the interval, interval zero to pi over twenty is at sine pi over twenty. Sorry, you're not, not, is, is at, is at pi over twenty with a value of sine pi over twenty.
Say that again.
So, we're trying to maximize the fifth derivative, the absolute value of the fifth derivative, uh, between zero and pi over twenty. So the fifth derivative is negative sine x, so the absolute value of negative sine x, right, we're just gonna use. Well, it's just the absolute value of sine, uh, sine x, um. And so, it's gonna be, um, uh, you can graph it like this, so we have zero here. Pi over twenty is some little tiny space right there, right? And so, the pi over twenty is definitely gonna be higher than the value at zero. So pi over twenty is the maximum value over the interval zero to pi over twenty. For negative, the absolute value of negative sine x.
Yeah, one last thing, you see how we were doing like first derivative, second derivative, and uh, like the odd number derivatives were like zero? Why did that change, like, oh, no, was that just for the t, the Taylor series part of it?
It's because we were evaluating at zero, if I evaluated negative sine x at zero, that would also be zero, right? But I'm not evaluating a zero, I'm evaluating at pi over twenty, cause that's where the maximum point is.
Okay, makes, makes sense.
Right, okay, so we know what the maximum is, so that we know that our fourth remainder. Our fourth degree remainder at pi over twenty, for this function, the absolute value is less than. Sin pi over twenty over five factorial, pi over twenty to the five. Whatever that is, that is the remainder, I'll approximate it here, see what it.
One point two five times ten to the power of negative seven, if I did correctly.
One point two five times ten to the power of negative seven, so very little error, right? That means very little error between this and the real value of, uh, cos pi over twenty.
So that basically means you're doing a real engineering problem, they can just take that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Well, in, in, in engineering problems, sometimes you, you do, um. It, in physics problems, they approximate cos to be one of these Taylor polynomials because it's so accurate, right? It's so accurate for small angles, it's essentially the small angle approximation we did in physics before. It's just that we're using that the, um, the first degree Taylor polynomial of sine x is x. Right, so that's what we're using, and we're using the first degree Taylor polynomial to approximate sine, sine x to say that it's approximately x.
Do you happen to know if there's like some function that are like better to approximate than like others, like is there like? Some function that you get a better start with, or is it like more or less the same with any function?
Well, um, I'm not sure if there's like certain functions that you get a better approximation faster, I mean, cos x, you get a ver- very good approximation very fast. And then things like, uh, lawn, you don't get a very good approximation very fast, in fact, for lawn, you. Even if you do like the, you know, seven hundredth degree Taylor polynomial, for faraway points, you'll never get to actually an approximation. So, um, that's gonna be like the interval of convergence of the power series here.
Can you just summarize this question again, like, you said something about.
I'm not quite done the question, but yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, because you said something about the sine of x being equivalent to the x.
Oh, when I just said, sign, like I said, sine x is approximately equal to x?
Yeah.
That's not this question, that's just saying, that's something we did in physics, which you say, this, you say sine x is approximately equal to x. Um, because the first, because t one of x is, for, for, for sine x is x.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's why you can make that, because it's the first degree Taylor polynomial, uh, and you can make that approximation for that reason. Um, yeah. Okay, so we bounded the air, oh yeah, question?
I was just saying, I would think for any, anything that has to do with some transcendental number, like a number that you can't actually find the ending to.
Yeah.
It's probably something that's like, it's more useful to use it, a series than to use the actual number itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Something that needs a lot of accuracy, it's like, why use pi if I can make a series for pi that's like, a lot easier to work with?
It is a lot easier to work with, instead of just saying three point one, you know, or, you know, round it to four. Round it to four, easier.
Or technically, if you think about it, you could round every number to zero, cause they're closer to zero than anything.
That's true, there you go, what about infinity? Where would you round infinity to?
Zero.
You round infinity to zero? Damn, that's a mathematician right there. Okay, let's keep going, let's keep going with this question here, um, so we have.
Actually, anyone's correct, like I really entered and that was, and like the way that I got the, it's correct.
Yeah, okay, good, that sounds good. So, we a- approximated cos pi over twenty, we bounded the error. Also, find the interval where the error is less than one over ten to the five. What we want is that we wanna find some R n of pi over twenty. Right, find the interval, wait, what? No, it needs the n. Also max of f six, oh, hold on, maximize of six, da-da-da. N plus one derivative.
Uh, wait, isn't our interval, isn't our error already better than like one over ten to the five, cause like ours is like.
That's true.
Yeah, but you want to find the, the lowest number, the lowest n, which.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But I want it to be this accurate, okay, well, I just don't wanna use a series, I don't wanna use the function. How big does my series have to be so that I'm at least this accurate?
More thing ever, so you give the kid more accuracy than you can have, if it's not, if it's not mashed potatoes, I don't like it. If it's not french fries, I don't like it, it has to be mashed, but. I don't know what I'm saying anymore.
Yeah, you do it.
Like this, this will at least be useful for some, like, it could be useful in electronics, and it'll probably be useful mechanical, is being able to do this for certain things.
Anywhere, to be honest, in STEM. Science students beg to differ, they're like, man, I'm just doing some biology right now, just like.
Okay, I honestly.
So would we just do try an error and see if we take one term away? What the, like what the accuracies add, and if the accuracy is like.
The error should always be decreasing, because if the infinite sum is equal to the function, every time you add a term to your polynomial, the, the total error should go down by a specific, like by.
No, but then we have to like do that backwards thing and see if we remove a term, does it reach that point, and if it goes.
Oh, like T three.
No.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, so do the.
Oh, you just mean like take the one that we already did and then do.
Yeah, cuz it's saying, since, I think he's saying, since we already have to the negative, to s- to the negative seven, and the question adds to the negative five.
Three and safety.
Do we do T three, and if, if T three is not, then our original answer is still the correct answer.
Yeah, that.
It might be better to do it in the general way, because in case you're asked just the question of, hey, how many terms do you need to get this error? Cuz there's a more general way to do it than what, than.
What's the general way?
The general way is you find the N plus one d- uh derivative of your function. Um, and then you have to figure, uh you, you'll know what X value makes it. Like maximum, but then you have to find how many, how many terms makes it um like, how do I explain this, it'll use N instead of using a specific number, you'll, you'll have like N, you, you'll have Ns instead of, instead of actual numbers you can plug in.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do an example like that after this, this actually isn't, I, I, it's what I thought the question was asking for too, but this is asking, find the interval where the error is less than one over ten to the five. That's not asking which Taylor polynomial has an error less than ten to the one over ten to the.
So the question is already answered then.
Well, not quite, because honestly, I don't know how I'd answer it, because.
But how, how would you answer it, cuz it's like, it goes from one number to one number, it doesn't go, like you can have.
No, 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 interval of X, interval of X, what is the interval of X? Where the error is less.
Graph the, graph the Taylor polynomial, like how far from the center point can you go before you get like your, your, your.
Error.
Demanding too much.
Yeah, error more than ten to the, one over ten to the negative five.
Yes, just go from.
Ten, ten to the five. So this is a different question, but, but hold on, how do we answer this? Because he answers it like this, he says, he finds, maximizes, okay. He says also, max of the sixth derivative on X, sixth, sixth derivative of X. No, no, I keep saying the wrong thing, sixth derivative of F of X on, is that negative six to six? But why would it be negative six to six? Why does? Why, that doesn't make sense. And then at X equals zero, so that would be the derivative is one, so the fifth remainder. Some, some reason he uses the, I don't know, I don't understand it, um but I wanna do an example that's uh more what, what I, like he did more examples like this, and I think that would be good to do. So uh it's gonna be here at the end. Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay, let's try, so let's forget about the end of the question, let's forget about the end of the question here. Uh, let's try another kind of similar idea, and then we'll, we'll, we'll see back from here, so. This is enough for this question, let's see, um, this is what I actually wanted to do. Uh, consider sine X. Sine X on negative pi to pi inclusive, uh find the smallest N. Find the smallest N where the absolute value of R N of X is less than or equal to one over ten to the three. Yeah, at A equals zero. Okay, so. It does it weird, but let me, let me just try, so. Let's see what we have to do. R N is the absolute value of R N of X is less than ten to the three. Well, we know that the absolute value of R N of X is less than or equal to um the uh N, M over N plus one factorial over, uh I mean, it's times uh X for all X. So it, it's for, for all X, for all X in negative pi to pi. So it's gonna be X minus zero, so X to the N plus one. So.
Uh, should it be magnitude of X or just X?
Yeah, and, yeah, absolute value, yeah, that, that works. Oh, boy, what is this?
I'm gonna guess is a question where we say that, that, that any derivative of sine X has to be less than one, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
And then we just use that, because we know that it has to be less than one.
And we, then we want this to be less than or equal to ten, one over ten to the three. But we don't know X, so maybe I try a boundary point, yeah, we're centered at zero, okay. I'm gonna try this and see if we get the same answer as what Horowitz did, so this is what we want to be true. Right? We want this to be true, uh well, sorry, this is what we want to be true, but can't draw for some reason. That is what we want to be true, but by extension, that means that this is true, right? So maximize, first of all, any derivative of sine X will have a maximum. Um at, since we're going from negative pi to pi, we have a full two pi, uh you know, range that we're going over. Uh that means somewhere in there, any trig function will have a value of one, if we're inclusive of both ends. So we know the maximum value is one, so we know that one over N plus one factorial, absolute value of something, N plus one is less than or equal to one over ten to the three. What do I choose for X? Well, the biggest error will be at the endpoints, because we're centered at zero. So that's where I'm gonna put, the biggest error is gonna be at pi here. And now we just need to find what N value gives us this, you know, that, that this is true for. So if I try, you know, N equals zero, we shouldn't get it, no, if we, if I try N equals zero, I get pi. So that's, oh no, that is, hold on, no, no, it's not less than, sorry, that's not less than, um, yeah, that's not less than ten to the negative three. So for N equals, I try, so there's only, you can only guess and check here, you can't, there's no, no, no solving, so N equals zero, not true. N equals one, probably not true either, one, so it's gonna be two factorial, one half times um something cubed, no, this, so a half of pi cubed is not gonna be less than ten to the negative three. N equals two. See what happens, what's the answer? Hmm, okay, let's see, yeah, let's try N equals two, let's see what happens, so it's just gonna be uh one over three factorial, which is three times two. Um, times pi to the, I'm trying N equals two, so uh three, pi cubed. Okay, so still five point something, not it, so we're pretty far away, I'm gonna skip a little bit, I'm gonna say N equals ten maybe. Okay, I'm gonna skip a little bit, N equals ten, so this is going to be one over ten, eleven factorial. So eleven, do I have a factorial button, I do. Eleven factorial, one over eleven factorial times pi to the eleven. So I get um seven point thirty seven times ten to the negative three. So not, which is not less than one over ten to, ten to the negative three, it's greater, but that's okay, uh we're, we're almost there. Let's try N equals, um, let's see what the answer is. Uh, N equals. Tw- what?
I think it's thirteen.
Uh, well, the value is thirteen, but I think the N is, is twelve, so if I, if I put, put, N is twelve. And then I, so it's gonna be one over thirteen factorial pi times pi to the thirteen, I get uh four point six six three times ten to the negative four, that is in fact less, uh but actually, I still have to check eleven. Just to make sure that eleven wasn't there, so I'll just try it.
Because you have to say one point nine something, so it's, it makes the cut.
Yeah, it's one point nine uh three times ten to the negative three, so still too big, this is the first one that isn't too big. And that's how you do it, so now I found the N, that's the, that's, we have to find the nth degree Taylor polynomial. Um, so that on negative pi to pi, on that whole interval, the error is less than one over ten to the negative three. So that whole interval, not at a single point or near a point, that whole interval, negative pi to pi, the error is less than uh ten to the negative three. So I need a twelfth degree Taylor polynomial. The thing is, is that it's more complicated than this, yes?
I was gonna say CPW uh told, uh, I, cuz we, in one of his offices, he said, um, as like a trick for these questions. Once you have this equation, like you have, cuz it's basically guess and check, like you said, but he said, but all you have to, like, he said, just look at the func- the two functions. If you have one over something on, on right side, you know that, and your other side has some some factor on the top and some factor on the bottom, you know that the bottom, the denominator is gonna have to be larger than ten to the three. In order for it to be.
Yeah.
In order for it to get to a, a, a number less than three, cuz you also have something larger than one on the top.
So you need a big factorial.
You can quickly, said it's a way to like quickly, like go, instead of checking one, two, three, four, five, is it just dump to like whichever one gets you past that number.
Yeah.
And then check from there.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, so here's this, the thing is, is that um this the, okay, so the Taylor polynomial for sine X is this. I'll tell you what the time, or the Maclaurin polynomial for sine X is this, Maclaurin uh for sine X, and maybe we can go, and it might not really be worth the time to go through why it's this. I mean, it is worth the time, really, but uh this is what it is, so I'll just, for now, I'll just say it, is the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of negative one to the N, X to the two N plus one over two N plus one factorial uh for, it's converges for all real numbers, for all X, so this is an alternating series, right? We can use the alternating series, alternating series estimation theorem to find this. And in that will get us a more accurate answer, so when you have an alternating series, you're supposed to actually use the alternating series estimation theorem, which is what we learned in four, uh five point six or some, I don't know. Uh, check. We learned that in five point five, alternating series estimation theorem, so if uh you wanna estimate the remainder on the series. Right, so I think I plug in pi. Yeah, the remainder. Absolute value of the remainder is less than or equal to. Why is that that? I got no idea what's happening here.
Yeah, I have so many questions about this question now.
I mean, the way we did it isn't wrong.
No, it's just that, i- i- it's just that the answer, wait, how is that, oh, it's just that the answer is actually eleven. Because you get a more accurate, you get a smaller range on your upper bound. Uh so a more accurate guess of what the, of what the remainder is when you use the alternating series estimation theorem, so this is like being too generous with how big the ra- the, the um error is, right, so the, it's actually, if you choose N equals eleven, you actually are still within negative, um, you actually are still um within uh ten to the negative three of the actual value of sine X between negative pi and pi. So. Yeah.
But the answer is eleven?
The answer is eleven.
As in if you choose, so it's saying any number greater than eleven is going to give you less than one over thousand?
Including eleven.
Including eleven?
Yeah.
Wait, so, okay.
This is too generous of a, of a, of a remainder, this is.
So we did it.
This is too generous.
Use the alternating one?
Yeah, too generous. Okay, but also, I've kind of not been explaining how, like, like Horowitz did this, that first part in a very different way. Uh, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, he, the first thing he wrote. Maybe it makes sense, I don't know, the, the first thing he wrote was T T two N plus one, so already weird, of X equals the sum. N goes from zero, no, 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 K goes from zero to N. Oh, no, no, okay, so it's just a change of variable, it's fine, it's whatever, nth degree Taylor polynomial. Okay, negative one to the K over two K plus one factorial. X to the two K plus one. So from here, everything was in terms of two K plus one, which is why I was confused.
How does this help us exactly?
Um, cuz then maybe.
I'm not sure how this gets us closer to the remainder part, though.
Hmm hmm, I don't know either, because he uses that in the remainder part, he says, the remainder, he says the two N plus one remainder. Okay, um. Two N plus one remainder less than or equal to.
I understand like the alternating series uh remainder thing, but I don't see how taking a larger polynomial is gonna.
Hmm hmm, no, I agree.
You should end up getting the same polynomial anyway, shouldn't you?
Yeah, I don't really know, I don't really got anything for this. I don't know how to do it. Looking at my notes here. We would, so he takes the B Ns, which is this section, he does evaluate it at pi, like I was gonna do, evaluate it at pi. For some reason, it's two K plus three, um, I don't really know why it's two K plus three all of a sudden. Somehow he multiplied by X squared, but no, but, but also there. Yeah, I, I really, I don't, I don't know, the, this.
Two K plus three cuz he did the change of uh what's it called?
Change of variable? Or index, reindexing?
Yeah.
Uh, but wouldn't that change, shouldn't that also change like the bounds, like it didn't change the bounds, all of a sudden, and it's all, it's even, it even says R R two N plus one. And right next to that, you know, here, this, this R is two N plus one, and then in the expression, it's two N plus three. So I don't really, I really don't know, um.
No idea on that one.
This beginning part here is um, is, you know, answering the question, it's just that it's a little, a little bit of an overestimate. But that's okay, I have to say, because I don't know how to get a better estimate. Um, I will try to work on that and see if I can get an answer, I'm not sure.
That's the way we're supposed to do it, though, for this section, like you shouldn't be using the five point five part, right?
I don't know.
Like if you're asked this on the, if you're asked this on the mini test, I'm assuming they wanna see you do the remainder like this, and not the remainder.
Yeah, probably. Although it would be more accurate to do it by the alternating series test, so I don't know, he did do it like twice here, maybe. With the alternating series test, so, no, maybe that was actually just once, I don't know, I can't, I can't remember now. And I can't find them in the notes, I don't know, maybe I'm lost track of some. But we should move on to six point four, cuz this is technically still six point three, and there's only about half an hour left that I'm gonna be online for, so yeah, let's, let's move on to uh, let's move on to six point four, um, so six point four is working with Taylor series, I'll just write, you know, whatever, six point four is working with Taylor series. Uh, and so it's just ways that we use the. Uh and so it's just ways that we use the Taylor series to help us solve problems. Uh in math and in things that use math, which is a lot of things, so. Um I have two textbook questions that I planned, uh essentially this section is know how to do binomial series. And know a bunch of the, you know, have them written or is, I don't know, I don't know, but know a bunch of these Maclaurin polynomials. And differ- differential equations and integrals, which I probably won't even touch on, because that's not part of the thing, so I'll just write. Here. Uh binomial stuff is the most important thing though, so. Um, yeah, let's talk about that. All it is, is this formula here. Um, right here. This is the binomial formula, um you have one plus X, one plus something to power R, R doesn't have to be an integer. Um and it's evaluated to this, so it's the sum, N goes from zero to infinity of R choose N, X to the N. For X is in negative one to one. Okay, well, what's R choose N first of all? Um, it's, it's a thing that they use in combinatorics, but we don't need to know what that is. We can just know that R choose N is equal to. R N minus uh, R, R minus one. R minus two, dot, 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 R minus N plus one. Over N factorial. So for example, um. Two, well, maybe one half choose N, try to figure out what this is. One half, um we're going all, well, okay, we're kind of, let me choose a better one, uh I choose. Wait, no, hold on, what's, okay, one ha- one half minus N plus one is there. We don't wanna know what N is. So no, I couldn't do that, do I have to select what N is? Usually you don't have to worry about too much about evaluating it, uh we'll do it in a question, I have a question planned, it'll make more sense when I do it in a question, I don't know, for some reason I can't do that. A lot of the time you can just leave it as this symbol, right, R choose N, uh because that has a set meaning. So it's kind of like you're writing a big fraction, but you don't write the fraction line, so it's just be put in, you have to put in brackets like that. Um, and so. It just means this expression here for uh non, for R, N has to be an integer, but R doesn't have to be an integer, R can be whatever. So if you were to have something like one plus X to the, you know, negative three, then you can use that. Uh and and from there, so let's take a look at the textbook questions that address this, because I think that's where is a good place to start. We have uh, I chose one eighty-three. Why did I choose one eighty-three? That doesn't look that interesting. Oh, no, 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 it is interesting. Yeah. So. This question is gonna be pretty involved, there's a lot going on here, so one eighty-three from the textbook is. Uh find the Taylor series of each function with the given center, so find the Taylor series of at root X. At A equals four. Right, find the Taylor series for root X. F of X equals root X at A equals four, okay, so how do we do this? We can do this using the binomial formula, because we need to have um the center at four. How do I change the center? Right now it's gonna be uh one plus. Yeah, no, 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 right now it's not centered anywhere, it's centered at zero, you can just call it centered at zero, right, you can, you can treat this as. X to the one half, and you can say it's zero plus X to the one half. Or you can call it minus one, whatever, it doesn't matter what you call it, but this is, this is, you know, a way to look at it. We use the following substitution, this is how you change, change the center of a binomial. Okay, change where the binomial is centered at, you use this substitution, it's exactly like this, it's not too hard to verify why the substitution works, you can just. Do one multiplication. And it looks like this. So. What this means is that if I have B plus X to the R, I can rewrite that as B plus A to the R. Oh, can't see it.
Yeah, it's in here.
B plus A to the R, so I'm centering it at A, right, B plus A to the R, one plus X minus A, B plus A to the R. So if I wanna do this particular example, I can say that zero plus X to the one half is equal to. Uh zero plus four to the R, oh, R is one half. Times one plus X minus four over zero plus four. To the one half. The reason this is helpful, I know it seems kind of random, but this is just gonna be two. Times one plus X minus four over four to the one half. This now is the binomial, is is something that the binomial series can apply to, this is the binomial series up here. Right, so this can be two times the sum, N goes from zero to infinity. Of one half choose N. X minus four to the N over four to the N. And that is possibly where I left the question, I can't remember now. Uh you can combine the four to the N and the two, cause four is two squared, but. Uh yeah, I'm pretty sure that's where the question ends, that's, that's all you were expected to do, you're not supposed to evaluate what this one half, yeah, because that doesn't really simplify. It would just turn into this like messy expression.
So to be clear, with this and the previous statement that you had, we're just like changing the, where it's centered at?
Yeah, this, the whole, the whole point of this, uh this right here is to change the center.
Okay, I kinda missed the one that was before, where we talked, like after the whole sign thing, you did something before.
This, this here? This is the binomial series. Binomial series. Right, and it's just a formula to find one plus X to the R that can be written as. The sum N goes from zero to infinity of R choose N, X to the N, and if you wanna know what R choose N is, you can usually just leave it as R choose N. But if you, for some reason, if they ask you to fully expand it, well, it's this, this is what R choose N is for R being uh a non integer. If R is an integer, it's actually a lot simpler, but.
Wait, just to be clear, cause I missed something, was this right directly after the sign question? Trying to find.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
We're in six point, we're in six point four now, this is in six point four.
Okay.
Right, so yeah, so I used that here, I used both these, so I changed the center to get it to be centered at four. And now I used this, cause this looks exactly like the binomial. Series, one plus X to the R, one plus that to the R, right? To the one half, so I can re- rewrite that as two times the sum, N goes from uh zero to infinity of one half choose N. X minus four to the N over four to the N. And that's the answer there for that.
So are you gonna do an actual binomial series question?
This was a binomial. This was, yeah. This rule. I applied.
It was also like.
I applied right here.
Oh, but you also like tried to change it, change the center.
That's why I chose this question, cause there's two, there's two parts to this question, you have to change the center and then you can use the binomial there. Binomial series up there.
I could use one of the binomial series is, to be honest.
It's essentially, it's essentially this, I mean, I I'm not gonna go over too long, because I wanna get some more questions done before we go on fifteen minutes, but yeah, there's a lot to it, it's very interesting. It's um, like, if I have one plus X, if I have one plus X squared, we can foil that, we can deal with that, right? Uh if I have one plus X to the eleven, I could also do it, it'd be a lot harder, right? Uh what if I had one plus, one plus X to the fifty-six over thirteen? I wouldn't know how to do that really nicely, you know, it it would take a lot of time to deal, to deal with that. The binomial theorem, the binomial series is saying that this. Is equal to the sum, N goes from zero to infinity of R choose N. X to the N. Right, for absolute value of X less than one. Now, you know, what's R choose N, that's what I was explaining up here, it's, it's just this, it's just this notation thing, um of course, like. It has a real thing that people use it in, again, in combinatorics, that's where it's used a lot, it's not very difficult to actually understand what it is, but. That's not the point of this thing, it's, it's just the notation thing right now, it's shorthand for this whole thing that's happening here. Right, and that's what it means.
Okay.
Right. It's a, it's a way of counting things, yeah. So uh that's what the binomial series is doing, so then we used it here to solve this question, X, root X, the Taylor series for root X is this. It's that right there, centered at four.
Oh, yeah, I get it now, I kinda get it.
So the next question I have is two. Oh nine. Two oh nine is saying, let's see. Two oh nine is saying, uh find the Maclaurin series, find the Maclaurin series for F of X. Equals sine squared of X. Okay, find the Maclaurin series. To do this, we need to, okay, so this chapter is expecting that you know a few Maclaurin series. And I'll show you which ones they're expecting you to know, they're all in my notes if you wanted to see them there, but I'll just copy and paste them onto the screen. The, it's expecting you know, you know these ones. That's what this section is. So these are the commonly used Maclaurin series and their radiuses of convergence, right, so. This one here particularly, um lets us use this, it's, it even gives it as a hint, it says. Sin X, F of X is also, you could do one half minus one half cos two X. So sine squared X, I don't have a Taylor series for or a Maclaurin series, cos X, I do have a um Maclaurin series for. Right, so I can actually write this as one half minus one half, look at cos right there. So it's just going to be the sum, N goes from zero to infinity. Of negative one to the N. Um, two X to the two N over two N factorial. And I'm almost there, it's not quite, but it's almost there, um let's see what happens here, let me, let me expand a like two terms here, two terms. For some set value of X, well, no, no, no set value of X actually, we don't have to set X, X is whatever. So one half, what would the next term be? It would be one half times for, for, so this one half is just from here. This one half is just from here, and I'm just gonna set N equal to zero and I'm gonna solve this, so it's gonna be N equals zero is going to be um. This is gonna go to one, this is gonna go to one, this is gonna go to two. No, N equals, no, no, sorry, N equals zero, it's gonna be zero factorial, uh so then it's just going to be one, so this is actually just times one. And then I'm gonna, the next one would be negative one to the, to the one, would be negative one times whatever. Some value of whatever, it depends on X after that, so. Doesn't matter, what matters is that these cancel out. So this is the sum, N goes from, so this was. This was N equals zero, this was N equals one, so this is the sum, N goes from one to infinity. Of negative one to the N, two X to the two N over two N factorial. And that is in fact what the Taylor Maclaurin series for sine squared X is. I just thought that was a good question too. Okay, that's, any questions about what I just did there?
Sorry, so what happened to the? Uh, oh, I guess they cancelled, nevermind.
Yeah, they cancelled, notice, notice here, the index starts at zero, here the index starts at one.
Yeah, okay.
Um, okay, let's see, Florence series.
So wait, are you assuming that at, at one, it's. It should be um. Exactly as the, of what we just got, which is the two X, two N over two N factorial.
What do you mean at one?
Instead of starting at zero, because zero cancels, right, well, the term.
Yeah.
You know, nevermind, I think.
It's equal, it's equal, it's equal, yeah, I use the equal sign here, so yeah, it's equal to the last line.
Okay.
Um, okay, I have one good question here, then I have a bunch of differential equation questions, which I don't think are necessary. And then I have the statistics questions, which I also didn't even put in my notes, because they're so unnecessary, so. But watch us get that on the test, that would be bad.
Do you delete every previous like note submissions that you send, like on the Discord? Like do you add the most recent and then delete the previous ones?
I don't delete anything, I don't do anything.
No, because like in the homework, in the workup thing, when you look in the pinned messages, it's always like I can never find, it's just one, I don't know.
Oh, you mean like uh homework, you want like to see the old notes?
Yeah, so I'm saying, do you just delete the old notes and just?
I don't know, I think, I think whoever pins them unpins them.
Oh, okay, okay.
They're not deleted, but, but the most updated one is probably the best one to use.
Let's have everything, yeah, okay.
In terms of like the statistic question stuff, I don't think they ever test us, test us on anything that they don't teach in class.
Did they teach, did they, did they, did they teach statistics?
They didn't do, I didn't do statistics in my lectures.
Horowitz did, Horowitz did, but yeah, I really don't think.
I don't think they can test you unless all of the.
Professors did it.
Cause that was the same thing for when we did um, uh what was it, like? Not, not chapter four, new chapter four, chapter four, old chapter four, like when we were doing um.
Volume two.
Implicit, like uh what was it called, differential equations, but like first order ones?
Yeah.
Um, you could do with some questions in the book that were like, that were assigned, that were like um. Were question type things, where it was like, like rate, had rates and stuff. But we didn't go over them in class, and when I asked CP about them, he said, if you're tested on those, let me know, cause we didn't cover them in class. So you can't, you can't be like evaluated on that if it wasn't.
Yeah. Makes sense. Makes sense, yeah, so he wouldn't, yeah, he wouldn't be asked to do that. Okay, so the next question I have here is find the Taylor series for this uh thing here. Well, what you're supposed to notice is that D by DX. Of root one plus X squared equals X over. Uh one plus, root one plus X squared. Is that true? Negative, isn't it supposed to be negative? Let's see what happens, it would be um negative one, yeah, wouldn't it be negative?
Why would it be negative?
Because. Oh, yeah, no, no, yeah, I'm, in my mind, I'm taking the derivative of this and then, yeah, okay, that makes sense, yep, that, that's all good. So it would be two and one half and then denominator is two and two X, yep, okay, we're good, so. So now I want, well, now that I know this, I can find a Taylor polynomial for this and. Or Taylor series for that, and then just integrate it. And I'll get the original function, so what's the Taylor series for that? Well, it's a binomial. It's in the form one plus X to the R, so I can write that as the sum. N goes from zero to infinity of one half choose N. Uh X to the two N. And then I can integrate this. From zero to X. Not from zero to X. Can integrate this from.
Oh, don't we do the derivative? Because it's D of DX of root one plus X squared.
Yeah, so.
Do the derivative of, of the series that represents one over one plus X squared.
Wait, one over, I don't have one over one plus X squared.
No, not one over one, sorry.
Yeah, square root of one plus X squared?
Yeah, the square root of one plus X squared, the derivative of that is our function, so we have to perform the derivative of the series.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, you're right, you're right, oh no, series isn't.
Otherwise we go backwards in time and that's.
Yeah, 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 I was thinking about it backwards, some stays.
Time manipulation by doing a Taylor series question, that's crazy. Said backwards through time was like. Say the backwards through time was like impossible.
Yes. So let's try to take this derivative. Well, uh, this is a constant, like it's not, doesn't, doesn't change with X. So, uh, it doesn't really matter. So I can just take this, this is the sum N goes from zero to infinity. Of one half choose N, two N, X to the two N minus one. And is that the sum? Let's just, is that right? Uh. I got. N plus, oh, he did some sort of change of variable. Why did? Does he always do change of variable? I don't know why. It's fine.
It's cuz if N is, well, it's cuz if N is zero, X becomes negative one. So they usually try to change it so that that doesn't happen.
Okay, that makes sense, actually, yeah. Um, but without the change of variable, that's what it didn't ask for change of variable, so don't do a change of variable, yeah. That does make sense, though, why, why you would want to do that because then it is a weird power series. It's still a power series, but a weird one. Anyways, that's the answer for that. You just take the derivative like that.
Wait, the original question was X over root one plus X squared and then you were saying that. The derivative of this function gives us what we're actually, what we had in the beginning.
Yeah.
And so we did the integral?
No, no, we did the derivative. We did the drift.
So we just did the derivative of the first, sorry, which one are we doing?
Of this, of this, of this.
Oh, yeah, cuz then it's in the form, right?
And then the derivative of that is this.
Okay, yeah, 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 that makes, that makes sense.
What a diagram, sir.
It's beautiful.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
That makes sense. So we did it, put it in the form and then we just did the derivative of it. That was, that's, that's. Pretty interesting how.
Change of, a change of index cuz it gets zero anyway. Cuz you get two times zero, so why would you have to change the index? Negative one is irrelevant.
Yeah.
So why would it, why would you change anything on this? Horowitz, come on.
One, it would be two, yeah. That's true, actually. Yeah, I don't see any reason that you would do that. Uh, unless one half choose zero doesn't work. Nope, one half choose zero does work. One half choose, well, I I don't know what how to do with integers, but it would be something that works. Um, so anyways, I have one more question from the work which. Isn't too crazy. Actually. It's not even really worth the time. I mean, I I guess I may as well do it, but I, you know, after this, I'll just, it'll just be. Uh, be pretty much done. So find. The Maclaurin. Series for. For what? For X E to the two X. So, well, we're supposed to know the Maclaurin series for E to the two X and we do X times that. Well, we're supposed to know the Taylor, the Maclaurin series for E to the X, which you can apply to E to the two X. So that is N equals zero to infinity of, I'm pretty sure it's X to the N over N factorial. Let's see. E to the X is X to the N over N factorial, yep. So it's two X to the N over N factorial. Which is two to the N, X to the N plus one, and that's the answer. That was, I thought it was more complicated. I thought it was more complicated than that, yeah, that's.
That's pretty good.
That's all.
It's, it's really weird how that works, really.
Yeah. Um, and yeah, that's essentially, that's it. Essentially, that's everything.
I feel like definitely the remainder part would be something that we might get tested on.
I think so too.
More like inter, it requires more understanding of what of what you're trying to do than.
Mm-hmm.
Just the Maclaurin series.
Mm-hmm, I agree. So. Yeah.
Take the derivative of the power series. Doesn't the index increase by one?
It doesn't have to, but it, yeah, it can. It doesn't make a difference, actually.
Oh, I know that's for integrals cuz you put, you end up putting N at the, as a.
No, no, with, with, no, no, with derivatives, I'm pretty sure. It's, 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 they, they, they in- increase it because. You have uh the zero here, so they increase it to just putting it to one.
No, it's integral, cuz think of an integral. If you do an integral, you end up getting two N like at the bottom. Like if you do an integral, you divide by, you're gonna be dividing by some N factor.
Plus one, though. Plus one.
Well, that's true, you just get plus one.
Plus one. Right? No, you don't. Here, look, look, you go to, you go to my notes here. Um, for six point two. Differentiation here. So look, uh, differentiable, you, the derivative, you index up by one. Converges F prime, the integral doesn't change the index there. Integral, integral doesn't.
I guess cuz if you did, there's no, zero is zero, so you don't even need the first.
You don't, yeah, for this one here, yeah, exactly, cuz if N zero, then the whole thing's zero. And then if you were to take the second derivative, you'd have N and um. And N minus one. So both zero and one both end up with just zero as the whole term, so you can index it up to two. But you don't have to. It doesn't, you don't have to. It doesn't make a difference. It's just that's a typical thing to do. Okay, well, that's all the questions I'm gonna do for today. It's quite a bit. Um. Definitely, I got some work to do still before the test. But I think that was pretty good.
I'm just feeling some deja vu right now. I'm really feeling like some deja vu.
For, for what?
Happen, just like. Yeah, just like um saying you definitely will be prepared for this test.
Yeah.
It's like, and then we have like something to do cuz like we have the ECN to do before eleven o'clock.
Oh, my god, yeah, I have to get, I have to do that right now.
Yeah, so so I didn't, I didn't even know the chapter yet, so it's like.
Oh, you didn't watch it? I wa, thankfully, I watched the lecture. Thankfully, I watched the lecture already, but.
No, I don't know.
What do you guys have for ECN?
Tuxoy.
Soi.
Oh, that's why I'm like, why you have something due at eleven? I'm like freaking out here. I'm like, what?
I don't know why he did it. I don't know why he did it for today. There is no reason.
No.
Like, we have a quiz as well, but it's not, it's not due till the sixth, so like.
It's five?
So like, yeah.
Is that quiz five?
Yeah.
This man is a whole week. Ahead for quizzes. Why? There's no reason. All right, well, I'm gonna try to figure it out. I might text, yeah, yeah, anybody else is good at ECN? No, it's not really the same, but. I don't know. I don't think Gervitz and Tuxoy give similar questions. I think. If you're in Tuxoy, you'll get similar Tuxoy questions. If you're in Gervitz, you get similar Gervitz questions, but they're not the same across.
Mm-hmm. By the way, uh, thank you for the tutoring. No problem, no problem.
Bless you guys. Take care, everyone. Have a good Friday.
Have a good night, have a good weekend, everybody.
Oh, wait, Adam.
Yeah.
Did you get your reward from the thing or does that not happen yet?
I didn't hear anything about it. I haven't heard any. That would be cool.
Do you not remember when we all nominated him for like the, one of the awards? One of the RESS?
I don't even know where I'd find it or how to check or anything like that.
Yeah.
Oh.
You mean they email you cuz they like have your name and stuff?
I guess so, yeah. That'd be cool.
Honestly, I always struggle with my emails. It's like buried. You put it, it's buried in my emails.
Buried.
I. But I don't know. I didn't even know about the nomination things, but you know that I would have nominated you if I knew about it. I, I did not check. I didn't even know you were a part of that. What, which, which group in?
I don't know if it's, you have to be a part of anything. I think it's literally.
No, I was just nominated, yeah.
What was the nomination, though?
It's an award. It, I forget what the one, I don't remember the actual description of the award, but we did it. It was, it was, this was a little bit ago. Back when we, before the, the, his midterm.
Yeah.
Oh.
It happened during the Zoom call. That's, that's when it happened.
Yeah. I remember that, yeah.
Same call?
Um, I'm sorry, I just have two questions.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Um, so the last question for six point three.
Okay. Here. Oh, this one?
Yeah, just, but like above, yeah, okay. So you chose. Um, in that like, just at the bottom there, one over N plus one factorial.
That's right.
Pi to the N plus one, why did you choose pi there?
Because uh our series, our power function is centered at zero, right? Our power function is centered at zero. And we're trying to find um the upper limit of the, of the um. Remainder, right? Upper limit of the remainder. So if if our sine X, you know, sine X looks like that, here, we're centered here. Um, pi is like that to like that, right? So, you know, if our estimation, whatever, our estimation is like, I'm just drawing a random. Like, let's just say that is somehow what our uh Taylor polynomial looks like, right? Okay, that's actually not, not helping my.
Right, the largest, the largest error would be at.
At the endpoints, at the, at pi or negative pi, exactly. And since we're taking the absolute value, it doesn't matter, so I just took pi.
Okay, um, and then just the question um right before.
Okay. Here?
Uh, I was confused on why you, uh, what you did with the fifth derivative.
Fifth derivative here, yeah. Um, so, okay, let's, 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 let me take it from the start. So. We're using the fourth Taylor polynomial for cos X at the, centered at zero to approximate this value and then bound the error. Right? So first of all, I found the fourth Taylor polynomial and evaluated it at pi over twenty. This is what I got. So I wanna know what the error is. So the error is, um, the fourth error function evaluated at pi over twenty is gonna be less than. M over N plus one factorial. So four plus one factorial to the power of four plus one. Is this okay with you? This, this, this step here?
Yes.
Saying this up, right? So then we need to decide what M is. Well, M is the maximum of the four plus one factorial. Right? The N plus one factorial, but our N is four. It's the maximum, we maximized um the fifth derivative. Right? Uh, between zero and pi over twenty, because that's what we're talking about. We're centered at zero and it's uh. The uh, the, the, we're evaluating the remainder at pi over twenty. So.
Can you just explain that last part where you said like why we're maximizing the fifth derivative?
Uh, because that's just part of what the formula is here for the remain, this is the remainder formula here, right? And.
Oh, right.
It's just part of the definition where M is the maximum of the F N plus once derivative in the interval we care about. The maximum of the N plus one derivative. Right? So I take the fifth derivative, I maximize it between zero and pi over twenty, which is gonna be sine of pi over twenty. Um, and then I just use that to be part of the, to be for M. Does that make sense? Is that good? Okay, good. Happy to hear.
Wait, it's still divided by the five factorial and the.
Yeah.
Multiplied by the pi over twenty squared, right?
To the fifth power, sorry. Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Okay. It was, what was, were they asking for? Was this the question where we weren't sure if it's asking for the minimal error? And we just ignored that instead.
Yes, yes, we just ignored it.
Okay, okay. All right, it's pretty good. All right, um, I'm gonna try and learn this ECN now. Thanks.
Yes, go for it.
Found some people.
Yes, go for it.
Be you won. Thanks, guys.
Good. Bye, bye, Joshua, bye.
Bye, bye, guys.
All right, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
See ya.
Have a good weekend, too. I forgot.
Yes, that's true.
Oh, yes, okay, I.